Okay, welcome.
Yes.
First up, I want to get a motion to go into special session, our sixth voting session for an introduction of an ordinance.
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It is introduction of an ordinance, quick claim of an alley right of way.
I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance, the quick claim of portion of an unimproved alley right of way of the rear of five two eight East Franklin Street. The alley was previously quit claimed in nineteen seventy-three when the city council determined that it was no longer needed for public purpose, but no deed was recorded at that time to convey the right of way of this adjoining property.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, a work session is called to order. First up, we have the former Secretary of Commerce under Larry Hogan, Kelly Schultz, talk about the Maryland Tech Council.
Hi, hello.
Good afternoon.
What a lovely drive just across that little hill from Frederickburg here. Thank you, thank you, Councilman, for inviting me to come as well. And I was talking with Pam Lubel, who is my Vice President of Membership. That this is the first time I've been in the Hagerstown City Hall, which seems crazy after all of these years, but I guess I spent more time in the county office than I did here in the city office. But I did, just wanted to say thank you for not only having us here today, but for the wonderful opportunity that we've had throughout the years to be able to work with the tech community in Washington County and especially Hagerstown. We have been here quite frequently, working with businesses that are in your districts, and we want to be able to continue and grow those opportunities as much as we possibly can. So I'm just going to give you a little bit about who we are and what we see as far as the industry is at this moment in time. Maryland Tech Council is the largest tech association, trade association in the state. We're different than many other states associations because we have under our umbrella life science companies and technology. And we use technology in the big agnostic sense, so it's everything from IT, cyber, all the digital stuff, to energy, clean energy, ag tech, data centers is now a big part of our portfolio. And then, of course, universities and solution providers that we offer as far as our ecosystem. We have over eight hundred and fifty members at this point in time, and it's the whole gambit of all of the ecosystems. We host over seventy-five events every year, from our large events where we could get seven or eight hundred people to networking events, webinars, educational opportunities. And we are the advocate for our members both in Washington DC and Indianapolis. So it's a rather busy time of year right now for us, as you might imagine, lots happening in both of those corridors at this very moment. But we lobby twelve months out of the year on behalf of our members. So we like to say that we're kind of the connective tissue that brings all of those industries together, and we provide good opportunities for them to grow and excel. Our members here in Washington County, Hagerstown Community College is a member of ours, the incubator here, and all of their baby companies are courtesy members of the Maryland Tech Council. The Washington County Department of Business and Economic Development. Hagerstown Startup Week, we've worked closely with them. I have the pleasure personally of serving on the board of the Middletown Valley Bank, so I find myself here at least monthly, right down the street. But we're eager to expand our footprint here in Western Maryland. And just telling you a little bit about that, we received notification about six months ago from the US Department of Agriculture that we were a recipient of a grant through them, through their rural development opportunity. And our goal for that is to create tech networks that are in the rural parts of Maryland because we take it very seriously that we are a Maryland Tech Council and we represent the whole state. So we'll be, very shortly, once they start putting that money through, within probably the next month, be starting a tech network in Western Maryland and a tech network on the Eastern Shore. And we're going to be putting staff and boots on the ground just so that we're able to kind of pull this together and do some events and some networking opportunities and educational opportunities in the rural parts of the state, just to highlight some of the cool things that are happening out here already that we want to be able to emphasize and make that more of a connective tissue with the central part of the state. So we're very excited about that. Technology and life sciences, there are about over ten thousand of those types of businesses within those industries here in the state of Maryland, employing almost four hundred thousand workers across the state, and they really are kind of spread out. You'll see different hubs of different types of technologies in different regions of the state, which is always kind of fun to travel around and see that. And they're very strong. You may have heard Governor Moore recently with his budget has emphasized that he is looking at three, he calls them lighthouse industries, to be able to grow and expand in the state of Maryland that has that growth potential. And they are the life sciences, they are aerospace and defense, and then the cyber technology quantum. And so all of those industries are represented by the Maryland Tech Council. So being able to invest in that for the future and provide a very valuable workforce is something that we are working closely with the administration and the legislature on right now to make sure that we continue to make that growth. And part of the reason that I think the administration, and we certainly believe that these are, how would I say, the growth aspects of these industries is because of the average wages of the employers that are working in those industries. You can, in a life science company, you can start at entry level with no college degree, with some skilled training that we do actually at our Biohub Maryland Training Center in Montgomery County. You can start with sixty-five thousand dollars a year with no formal education on that, just with some skilled training. Similarly, within the cyber world and those types of opportunities where, again, skilled training, not necessarily master's degrees or even bachelor's degrees, you're making anywhere, you know, upwards of hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so we look at those very closely when I was at Labor and when I was at Commerce to be able to make sure that we provide the best job opportunities for employment for the workforce that we have that's here.
Yeah, I think that's a big thing we want to do is, you know, I was thinking about the region as a whole, what can we do to hire, you know, lower or more higher paying jobs to Hagerstown instead of just, you know, warehouses? You know, and like you said, you have no skill, you don't need a bachelor's degree, and you can make sixty-five thousand dollars. Because Loudoun County is the wealthiest county in the United States, we border south of them, and there's data centers left and right. It generates half a billion dollars a year just in their county budget. Like, we need some of that money to drip over to Washington County, especially here in town, I think, so.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all, Councilman. I think that as we start to look at, let's just start here. There's a lot of changes that are happening at the federal level and at the state level. There's budgetary issues, there's a lot of displaced workers that are out there. And a lot of important conversations are having, and there's very much an unsettlement. But Maryland, which we have said for a very long time, has needed to diversify the types of business and growth opportunities for our workforce here in Maryland outside of just the feds, meds, and ads, right? And when we look at that and we start to create other new opportunities, especially in technology, sometimes that is also a little uncomfortable. So we are having a data center conversation right now across the state and talking about that part of critical infrastructure. And where are those opportunities going to be for the settlement of those like Loudoun County? We're never going to be Loudoun County. We probably won't have as many data centers in the state as Loudoun County has in their county right there. They are the largest, most concentrated center of data centers on the planet, in the world. So I think it's important to recognize that we won't get there, but the need for data centers is not going to go away. It's just increasing every single day for many, many reasons. We are a technology laden society. You can't do anything without AI. You can't do your banking without AI at this moment in time. You can't, well, now people are writing papers, but don't tell their professors that. But I think it's a very technology oriented society in which we live, and data centers for our own national security and other purposes are just going to become a larger part of what that looks like. So we're looking forward to helping with that and being a part of those opportunities. Last year, the Maryland Tech Council held Maryland's first data center summit. We're holding it again this summer. Last year, we sold out. I probably could have sold three hundred and fifty tickets twice. But we sold three hundred and fifty tickets, so we have to move out of Frederick County for this year, and so we're going to go to Live Casino. We'll be able to hold about six or seven hundred people at that event, and it will still sell out. So the interest is here, and it's very important to educate local policymakers on what those opportunities are as far as the economic impact that the counties will have. Because, and the local jurisdictions, it's not simply the jobs that are created, but it's the creation of work centered around that as well. And I think there's longstanding benefits. We have some economic impact reports that have been done and issued on the topic. Happy to send those and share them if you'd like, but in a time where we realize in local jurisdictions that there's less money coming from the state and there's going to be less money that the state's going to get from the feds probably, it's important to look at different revenue opportunities. And I tend to believe that technology is that area of growth that we can most depend on.
Do you believe, have you gotten a lot of the NIMBYs not in my backyard with the data centers throughout the state? It's probably a big thing that people will kind of say, I don't know about a data center in my yard, but like you said, we're not going to be Loudoun County. So, you know, maybe just getting a few over here to generate some money, so.
There are definitely organizations out there that are opposed to data centers. In Frederick County, last year at our summit, we had not a significant number, but a decent number of protesters that were at our summit that we welcomed. You know, everybody's allowed to say what they want to say. We were at the community college for that. I think that one of the problems with the conversation about data centers is that it always tends to be one sided. That the data center community and that ecosystem hasn't necessarily been out in the forefront to provide greater education opportunities for maybe those neighbors to be comfortable with some of the realities of what data centers are and, more importantly, what they are not.
So because we don't have those types of facilities en masse in our region already, and there are probably a lot of folks that may not have an awareness of what that entails, you know, we're sitting here having a conversation about the pros and cons. For me, the immediate thought as just an average resident is, what does that mean? In other words, are they large space takers, meaning landmass? Or, you know, do they require significant investment in water and sewer facilities? Are we talking about, you know, a large volume of traffic generation from employee base? Those things that are tangible, the residents are going to sit here and hear this conversation, okay. Why don't other jurisdictions have an interest in them? What are the drawbacks that we may expect to experience from development of data centers, you know, what I'll call in our sort of, you know, neck of the woods of I eighty-one and I seventy-four?
It's a great question, and I'm happy to do a full presentation on data centers at any time, and I can bring some of the actual experts on the engineering and stuff. But I would say as a simple resident of Frederick County, I can tell you one of the benefits that is coming from their large project, right? It's a two thousand acre, the East Alco Station, if anybody's familiar with that, over in Adamstown. That is a brownfield, right, where there wouldn't be any development there, right? There's not much that you can do. But the other benefit is that you don't need to build new schools, you don't need to build new roads because there's not a super large employee base. So the infrastructure that you already have is probably there with the exception of energy. I mean, you have to make sure that your county has the energy proportions coming in from PJM, which is entirely different story. But you don't, there's not a lot of infrastructure that's needed to run them. One of the cons that some of the people that are opposed to data centers call out is they do utilize backup diesel generators. That's the type of technology that's available right now. I know that there's a lot of different types of technology, including battery storage, that's being developed in order to be able to take the place of that at some point in time in the future. Many data centers utilize, they don't use water, they recycle water as a cooling mechanism. So you're not having to create another water supply for the data centers. It takes the dirty sewer water, runs the cold water through the system to cool it naturally, and then it puts it back into the sewage system to get cleaned and go out like it normally would. And that's how most of the data centers are designed at this point in time. There's a whole host of reasons for people to not understand them enough to just want to oppose them without listening to what some of the new technologies that are there coming through. I think because Loudoun County is geographically still close to Maryland, just right across the river. I think people look at the data center question and think that the neighborhoods are going to look exactly like Loudoun County, and that's not the case. I will say the data centers that are being constructed right now at the development at the East Alco Station, so they're subdivided into different lots, so they can be a hundred thousand square feet, it could be two hundred thousand square feet. It just depends on the size of the property that the end user would want in order to be able to develop their property there.
Yeah, and I always felt like where the data centers go, so it kind of goes to money as well. So they're building well-to-do counties like Frederick and Loudoun as well. So, you know, just kind of what we can do more on the western side of Maryland, attracting more of that because I think Frederick and Loudoun County does a better job in Montgomery County because they're closer to DC. But anything we can do to make us more on the map, I think, would make us better as a city thing, so.
Well, I know that we have, and Pam has, spent a good amount of time with the incubator here in Hagerstown and being able to foster those types of companies that are coming out of the schools is a great place to start, right? So when you're thinking about how we provide resources in an ecosystem for these baby companies that as they grow, they're going to have a place that they're going to want to be, and that's placemaking, right? So you want to make sure that those baby companies are going to stay here. If you're going to grow them and foster them, then you want to bring them to fruition and have them employ more people here. And that is probably something closest that a city council could do to be able to foster that relationship with those companies that are naturally coming onto the college here.
Yeah, I hear about the demand and the need and then the impact on utilities and facilities. Like, the first thing that comes to my mind when you say that, you know, they run a diesel generation and things like that, and they utilize recycled water. When I was Commissioner, you know, one of the things we talked about was we have the Forty West Landfill, right? But we manage that leachate that comes off of that, you know, there's, and so there's a process required. And we're trying to figure out how to get it to the sewer plant, so there's this large swath of land. We also do burn off of the methane, right? So the first thing I think of in terms of the average citizen is, you know, there's a prime opportunity where Forty West Landfill is going to be there, you know, for our lifetimes, and there is land there that's available where you could install something like that, that then could use the leachate from the landfill for that water cooling, which resolves the issue of the water you're trying to keep out of the conic jig, and then use the methane burn off rather than be able to see if they could run generator, that kind of stuff.
Councilman, you are much smarter than I am about that.
It comes to my mind, like, okay, how do we get one here that isn't, that checks those boxes of being non-oppositional?
And you know what? I think that it's ideas like that, quite frankly, that are happening right at this very minute. So there is an organization called the Maryland Clean Energy Center, I'm sure if you've run into them. One of the reasons why I follow them so closely is because of this innovation when it comes to energy generation. And that generation is something that, you all know this more than I, we need dramatically here in the state because we do not produce enough of our own energy. And so there's lots of varying ways to do that and to be able to tap into a microgrid and how to develop your own energy from the resources that you have. And those conversations are happening now, even in Annapolis, and I think it's really important to continue those. And so, just so that I don't get in trouble, the data centers use the diesel generators as backup generation, not as their normal source of functioning, that's all. Because someone will hear that and say, you can't find diesel generators for all of that hundred.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I guess, the not in my backyard with the power lines being built. I think that's Frederick and east of us, a big thing. I don't know if that affected them or.
Yeah, so the power line issue is separate, but not separate from the data center, right? So the idea of us as a society consuming more energy goes well beyond a data center conversation, right? Data centers, you know, they absorb, I think it's like five percent of the amount of energy in which we use, right? So they are not even in the top ten of the top energy consumptions that we have right now. But I think because this conversation is happening at the same time, people are lumping it in together, saying that the data centers, it's the data centers fault for the energy transmission lines that are coming through. The energy transmission lines, the NPRP, that is something that had to be, they say had to be built in order to be able to transmit additional energy mostly to Virginia. So the, I think, eighty percent of the energy consumption from that new line is forecasted to end in Virginia. Which doesn't make it easier for people who are seeing new transmission lines that are coming through.
Yeah, there are probably too many data centers in Loudoun County, so.
But that is just one type of technology, right? I mean, so there are other opportunities and being able to grow and foster, you know, some of your own baby companies here and also utilizing that as a resource to attract, you know, some other businesses that are here and providing opportunities for them to know the types of space and facilities and such that you have here that could be utilized for that.
Yeah, because I know the governor of the state of the state, he mentioned he wanted to make that a priority with IT jobs and things like that.
That's right.
As you said, changing priorities and what's happening in DC with loss of federal jobs or some things, how that might change our priorities here as well, so. How that's all going to work out.
Yeah, and I mean, he's utilizing his platform to say, I'm going to take some money out of this very tight budget and invest it in these types of businesses because we want them to be able to grow, right? So part of the budget process is knowing that you have to use part of that budget in order to be able to plant seeds for something that will grow. And I think that's where he is right now, and how it turns out in another four weeks, we'll all figure that out when that happens.
Anything else, Scott?
Thank you for coming.
Of course, having you here, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Yeah, definitely.
You know what? I will come back and I'm going to spread really good news about this new tech network. Next time I come back, it's going to be to announce that we have the tech network up and running, and I'll introduce you to our grassroots.
And the summit, the summit as well.
Yes.
More additional information on the summit.
Of course, I'll be definitely, that's in August. We might even have new protesters out there, it's always something. Thank you all very much.
All right, next up, Mr. Eric Deike, Director of Public Works for the twenty twenty-five Summer Camp Grant Program.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this is a program that's going on for many, many years. It's not that we're running the camps, there's other entities in the city that run camps, summer camps, and the city provides a total of seventy-five thousand dollars each year to help fund those camps. The news is, the four groups that submitted this year, we can fully fund two of them, and the other two is just five hundred dollars short of the funding they requested. It's very similar to what happened last year. The funding requests are very similar, the dates are very similar, this is a kind of a annual thing that we do. So it's pretty straightforward. We got the request, and like I said, luckily, two of them were fully funded, and two are just a little bit shy, so.
What's the total amount?
Seventy-five thousand, yep. As you can see in there, it's a Boys and Girls Club asked for twenty, we're recommending nineteen-five. Girls Inc. is requesting twenty-two thousand five hundred, we're recommending twenty-two. The YMCA is asking for eighteen-five, that's fully funded. And the RW Johnson Community Center is asking for fifteen, and we're recommending fully funding that.
And this has been consistent over the years with the requested funds and.
There was a few years where there was five groups, but the fifth group dropped out a couple of years ago. There was a private school downtown and they folded, so.
Beacon Town.
Beacon House, right, so they folded, so the money went back into the other ones.
I'm fine with this.
Next up, Mr. Jim Bender, City Engineer, for the Wheaton Park Improvements Update.
Good afternoon. At, I wonder if this last council meeting or sometime recently, a request made to provide an update on what's happening at Wheaton Park. So I put this memo together and I'll just run through it really quickly. A master plan was developed for Wheaton Park back in twenty twenty-one, and it was looking at different ways that the park could be enhanced or expanded, or we would install new things, different things that haven't been there before. So in phase one, in the memo, there's a a drone picture in there that fully shows most of the improvements that were made in phase one. A new parking area, paved parking area in the foreground. Next to that is the misting pad that was installed. And the green space beside the misting pad in the parking lot, that's actually where it's going to have been. It used to be a house that was rented, and we demolished that, it's part of phase one. Did some other landscaping, but I think the parking lot and the misting pad were the two big things in phase one. And I believe that Donna passed out to you the last element for phase one, which are interpretive signs which are going to be installed near the misting pad, and I just received those on Friday after the package is already gone out. They're not quite finished, but it'd give you an idea of what they will look like. So currently, we're working on phase two of the improvements at Wheaton Park. And there are two main elements that are part of phase two. One is a natural play area near the misting pad, actually in that green space that I had just talked about. Several ideas were presented to the community, and I think the thought was not so much that we just need another swing set or typical play equipment. I think there was interest in doing something a little bit different. So that's where we came up with this natural play equipment. And you can see in one of the photos, the contractor has actually started the installation. And we're hoping that they're going to be complete probably by the end of April. It's a little bit weather dependent because the the flooring material and padding material they put down around the equipment, it has to be up to a certain temperature. the flooring material and padding material they put down around the equipment, it has to be up to a certain temperature for it to work correctly. So we'll just have to wait and see what the weather does for us. The other main element of phase two is the construction of a new stage. Have the band show already at Wheaton Park, but there's not really a facility where if you want to do concerts or a larger type of show, there's just not a facility for that now. So we are proposing to build a new stage, not at the location that was shown on the master plan, which was over along Zuman's Avenue, but basically push it on the other side of the football field over between where the tennis courts are and where the bleachers are on, on that side, the far side of the park. The thinking being that that would open it up, give more space out in the football field. You know, if you had a larger gathering, I think it's, it's going to make it easier for people to see what's going on on the stage. Right now, the design for that stage is about ninety-five percent complete. We have some, some additional revisions and comments that we need to get resolved. But we're thinking that we're going to be in a position to put that project out to bid. Hopefully in April, you know, get it out, get it out to bid and then construct it over the summer. I know also at the previous council meeting, there were some concerns raised about the walkways, the condition of the walkways at Wheaton Park, and we are evaluating that. I think the worst places are up near the band show, mainly due to tree roots. So we are looking at what we can do there to smooth it out. I don't really, in my opinion, I don't think that the, the walkways need to totally be redone. I think we can do some spot repairs to, to make it better, but we're still looking at them. As far as future things at Wheaton Park, if you look at the master plan, there were, were the, I don't know, fifteen or so elements, the proposed elements that could be added to the park. Some of them have been completed, some of them were just, they were not selected for the second phase. So that would be something, if the council wants to maybe look through that list and see if there are any particular things that you would like us to start designing or implementing. Or if you have ideas for different things that maybe aren't on the list, we can certainly incorporate that going forward with our CIP process and our improvements to the parks. So that's really all I had. Do you have any questions about what's going on up there?
I have a couple of comments, of course. One, thank you for coming to provide an update for Wheaton Park. I know I've been in communication for some time about what's next, what's going on, obviously driving by the park and seeing like the natural play equipment being put up and like already knew that was coming. And the, the mural that we have the draft of, like literally adds up like four o'clock. Terry Lynn text me that she already made some slight modifications to this, based on some suggestions, like from Eric. Which is, it's going to be beautiful when you, when the public sees the amount of work that went into this. And for context, like the memo stated, for this particular project, it was very much community driven. There were meetings held. Former Mayor Dakeisha Martinez and I went door to door with flyers, making sure the community came outside to the park and provided their, their feedback in like a manner where there were boards up and, and the community put like stickers on what they wanted to see at this park. And it's just amazing to see even little things that's come to light based on community feedback for that particular area. Based on the plan, there were several plans, designs that was presented to us the last administration. And we came up with the design that we have in front of us. That's been, that's been the, the four, the, the guide. But I just want to highlight, based on those communications and the meetings from the public, that the, one, yes, last week about the, the walkway and there are some divots and stuff, which is, which should be addressed. And also with FCA's request of more lighting, which is, again, is not part of this project, but it's something that we should consider. And the small basketball court was a big thing to make it a full size. As summer league attendees call it the little court, little court, big court. But extend, extending the smaller court to a full size was one of those things that was talked about many a times in the, in the discussions, as well as the playground upgrades to the existing playground equipment. And the existing pavilion that's there now. I know there was some that complained about, you know, when it rains, the water goes like completely under, under pavilion. So if there's anything that we could do with like the structure within itself. And the, the stage area is, is nice to see that we are now using Wheaton Park as an entertainment type venue. So when there are concerts and having the, the stage area on that side, it was really, it was, it was good. You could hear it. It wasn't like disturbing the neighborhood so much. So I'm glad that's still moving forward. And oh, and the misting pad. I mentioned this last summer during the summer league updates. The kids have a ball. And I just want to thank you and staff for going back and tweaking the height of the misting pad. Because I was a lot of complaints like, it's too small or it's not, it's not forceful enough. It's like, you know, there's no pool in the area, not yet. So the kids like literally look for that misting pads like, like when it's really hot as like the area to get soaking wet. And you didn't have to hear Ms., Ms. Paula yell at the kids about throwing water at each other from taking our water bottles from the park games. But that's, that's all I wanted to say, say to this point. But yes, this, this draft, everybody sees it. The, the welcoming signage, it's, I was teary eyed when I saw it. It gives homage to the caretaker house. It gives homage to pillars in our community, from the Monroe family to, to your, your own here. And when Terry came to one of our summer league games, she gathered feedback from the crowd that was there and signatures from those. So that's even captured on this draft version. So it's going to be, it's going to be beautiful. I'm just happy that this was a project that former council considered to be important because this area needs, needs, needs the love, needs the moral upkeep, the moral help to, to push them along. So I'm off my soapbox now. Thank you.
Now I'd say two things. One is we're still tweaking the misting pad. We're just trying to figure out the best way to, to make it work. It's a work in progress, but we'll keep at it.
They just want a pool, that's all.
It wasn't even coming up to their knees. Second thing, which wasn't really part of the master plan necessarily, but at a request, we actually had a leftover shade structure from the sun. We actually installed it at the southern end of the basketball court, the big basketball court. Because that's one thing that Wheaton Park is lacking, which is shade. You know, it's except around the band show or certain places, it's pretty much wide open. So we, we did that and I guess we would look for other opportunities to make people feel more comfortable there.
Yeah, I checked that off as completed on this list. Because at one point there were conversations about the trees, removing the trees, and we had a lot of feedback from the community, like do not remove those trees because it's already too sunny, especially from, from the elder community. They were like, no, we like to come to the park and we need that shade. So that canopy has been worked out really great.
Quick question. Is there any timeline that they can expect? That like we can kind of announce for the stage or for the the other like natural playground?
The natural play area, if things go the way they're going now, I'd say by the end of April, it's probably going to be complete and open and available. The stage, hoping to put that out to bid in April. Probably will bring it to council in May and then go to construction in June or July. And it's really not that large of a project, so I would think by the summer or yeah, by September, so it would be in.
Are you placing it? There was a concert. Who was, I can't remember the young lady.
The artist.
Is it gonna kind of like be right in that area?
Sort of. If you look over there between the tennis courts and where the bleachers start down toward the southern end, there's a utility pool already over there and it's, the stage is going to go right beside that utility pool. So it's kind of right in that area, just to the north of it.
And are we redoing the bleachers right there also?
That was not something that we necessarily had on our radar screen, but it's something that we can certainly take a look at.
Now Jim, for, for, I know we, Mayor and Council has approved for funding CDBG funds to go towards this. Now for the rest of the, the items on the plan, where would the funding come from? Like could we use the, the program open space for any of the additional, like for playground upgrades? I know we, there's a, a requirement that the funds should be used for equipment like that can last for 20 years or something like that. Could that be used to help go towards the rest of the items that was mentioned by the community members?
I think certainly some things, I know. Eric is our POS guru right now, so he knows a little bit more than I do about what's eligible and what kind of projects he can do. I think there are certainly some things on this list that would be eligible.
Like definitely like the basketball court, that's something that's will be.
To coat the basketball court, no. To build a basketball court, yes, because the coating will last 20 years. They're looking at a useful life of 20 years.
Right.
So you can buy a bleacher. I think a lot of times it's not so much maintenance per se, but like if you were building a new basketball court, yes. We tried to go use POS funding a couple of years ago to recode the tennis court and re-stripe it, and the answer was no. Because it won't last 20 years. But if you were building a new court, that's a yes. But I can tell you this year, in the total funding for Washington County for everybody, I think it was five hundred and, I'm gonna say forty-some thousand dollars, the entire county. We've submitted projects in excess of three hundred thousand. So we're not going to get all those projects, right? I'm trying to get money right now. Our number one project that we voted on was, was rebuilding hole number five on the golf course. Hoping to get about a hundred thousand for that. But playground equipment, yes, we bought playground equipment in the past with POS funding. That's a, that's a definite yes. But again, it's that useful life is what, is what is the key. And definitely outdoors.
Now would, for any of these upgrades, would, would Mayor and Council have to approve on that? Will it be something that's just part of parks and parks and rights?
I think it depends on the funding. If it's part of the budget process, it's going to be approved. And then it would come back if it's a, if it's a purchase, you know, if it's over twenty-five thousand and it's bid out, then the council would approve. If it's a ten thousand or under twenty-five and it's been bid out, then the council wouldn't approve it. But we'd certainly make you aware of it.
Well, and I think we could, we can certainly come back at a later work session if you'd like to specifically talk about this park or, or any of the parks really. If you have ideas for improvements, you know, as we become aware of them, then we can work on making sure we budget for them and figure out a plan for implementation.
Yeah, our focus really was on phase one and two. And I know there was other items in there, but you know, our focus was really on phase one and two and getting, and finding the funding for those projects. So we'll just have to work at those and somehow work them in that future budget to get this taken care of.
Oh, one more thing. If there's any work to be done at this park and the other parks that were just listed, that the other agencies use, can we send out a notification? I say that because like last, was it last year or the year before, there was some work being done, but other agency says that, you know, they couldn't access the basketball court, they couldn't access this, but that, there was some miscommunication there when the park was fully accessible. So if there's anything being done, ran around the time around their summer camps, if we could just send out an email.
We can.
Just to let everybody know.
What you're referring to and the answer is, they fully knew that was, the park was fully accessible. Period.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Chief Geifer for proposing lodging out of doors ordinance.
Let me bring up a couple more people here, so. I'm going to start off in the beginning. We were here back in December. Originally brought this concept to you guys. And we're back with draft language of the ordinance that you should have, that we want to talk to you a little bit more about. And then I'm going to turn it over to the architect of the ordinance, which was sort of a bummer. And kind of Louis is going to talk to you guys a little bit more about this. And I brought Ashley as well, so she can talk to you about the community aspect. If there's questions that have to do with the homeless community itself. So I'll step back and let them.
Good afternoon. I wasn't able to be here last night. I had commitments and that was I here. I did review everything. We looked at all your concerns and we went back through and the city attorney made some adjustments, tweaks, and we're here to represent to you guys.
Go ahead and walk through.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we, we updated the policy. We updated the definitions. We kind of took some things out and simplified it because what we had found was in the process of, of writing the ordinance while trying to cover every aspect, we'd already had those aspects covered. There are already rules and regulations in place. I know there were some concerns about the potential of discretion, using discretion. Those are built into our rules and regulations already. So we've added different sections to the rules and regulations under the patrol function, right alongside other implementations of directions to patrol officers as they're enforcing different aspects of laws throughout the city. Discretion is built into all of our laws. The only time that discretion is, is not built into our laws. It specifically tells us what we are to do, what we aren't to do. The example being domestic violence laws. We, we don't have discretion in those. The law tells us what we have to do. So discretion is the ultimate environment of these, of enforcement anyhow. Penalties, the penalties are, were evaluated. Those penalties are in line with, with the state laws. We don't have much wiggle room on those. And we, we have, we took out the, the section on what to do with property because the city ordinance, there's a city ordinance already in place that defines what the safety department does with property. And it's also inside of our rules and regulations of what we do with property. So.
Personal property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We, so we went through and just made this about the ordinance, not necessarily so much about all the stipulations and different aspects of the ordinance because it's already in place. We would have made it too confusing. We tried to clarify it and make it as simple and easy to flow as possible.
It's pretty simple to me. That's for sure. So.
Would, would you just go through, especially on the three definitions, and just explain the three definitions so that folks that don't have this in front of them can understand what lodging out of doors, public place and sleeping means?
Yep. So we went through and, and we, we called it lodging out of doors so that it's more of a clearer definition of what we're looking at, the actual term. And again, means the use of public place for living, accommodation purposes such as sleeping or making preparations to sleep, including the laying down of bedding for the purpose of sleeping, storing personal belongings, making a fire, using a tent, shelter or other structure for sleeping, or doing any digging or earth breaking, whether temporary or otherwise for the purpose of sleeping. So it, it kind of defines what, what the definition of lodging outdoors be, breaks it down for us. Public places again means any outdoor area owned or maintained by the city of Hagerstown, including but not limited to streets, alleyways, sideways, bridges, parking lots, parking decks, parking plazas, parking buildings or other public properties. I'm sorry, public buildings, not parking buildings. And then sleeping means the act of being in a state of rest while laying down with the intention of sleeping, which may include the use of bedding, blankets, sleeping bags or other similar materials. And moving through this, the depth, the idea of this ordinance when I first presented it was one to preserve kind of the sanctity of the city. To do, you know, so that everybody can enjoy the different areas. If somebody has, has taken up shelter in an area, it deprives somebody else from being able to use it. But it also at times protects the actual person who's sleeping. So in a position where you're sleeping, you may become vulnerable. You could be a victim of crimes of opportunity. When I was a patrol sergeant, I actually started to track those. It's been a couple of years removed since I've been a patrol sergeant. But I know that there have been instances of individuals having things. But I know that there have been instances of individuals having things stolen from them while they were sleeping. There's instances where, very tragic, and I'm not saying this ordinance would have prevented all that. This wouldn't. This isn't the end all be all. It's one extra tool. But there's an instance where a person who was sleeping outdoors was killed. And I'm not saying that that one absolutely happened, but putting one more barrier in place to protect them may have, may have potentially prevented that. So that's, that's where it kind of went. It protects, the goal was to protect everybody involved in the presentation.
I think that the important part of this for a public consumption is to understand clearly what the proposed ordinance does and doesn't do. And I think that that's the part that I have wrestled with since our last conversation. And so for me, you know, what should be made clear to the public is this absolutely doesn't speak to these types of activities on property the city doesn't own. So that's other government owned property, that is nonprofit property, that is private for profit property. That is state owned property. None of the property that is owned by others in the city of Hagerstown has no application to those properties. And then so for me, I said, okay, so what do we own? We own stall water management facilities. We own sidewalks and other public ways, streets, alleys. We own parks. And we own utility properties, water, sewer, electric, those things. And then for me, I have to, to, to sort of narrow that a little further. So as a resident, we post signs at our stall water management facilities. And that's to ensure that individuals don't utilize those in a manner recreationally, for living purposes, et cetera. We, we, we have no trespassing for those properties. Stall water management facilities for utility properties, water and sewer, you certainly don't want, excuse me, folks where we have electric substations, things like that. Because all of those types of utility and facility properties present danger to individuals for being on it. And they're to protect our resources that are critical infrastructure for the public benefit. So those are already out of the question, right? This ordinance or no, they're already out of the question. Which leaves me, public ways and sidewalks and parks. Clearly, you can't reside in any manner, you know, in the middle of a public street, in the middle of an alley. You can't, you know, reside across the entirety of a sidewalk. So those properties are sort of out of the question as well. Again, for purposes of maintaining public thoroughfares. In other words, you may be able to do it on some property where somebody could arguably still say they can get by because you have the minimum width. But you walk the streets, you know, most streets have three to four feet of width for the public tre- tre- traverse. So I can't park my car across the sidewalk in my driveway any more than I can block it by attempting to reside there. Right? That, that's probably the, the one that's most questionable among public thoroughfares. So the only other properties that I could come up with where this would most appropriately apply is in our parks that the city owns, right? But we have rules. So, so I couldn't go over to City Park and in the middle of the night, strike up a game of softball. Right? Because the park's closed at night. You would vacate me from that property for that purpose. No differently than you would vacate any other individual for activities they're attempting to, to commit to in those public park spaces because at nighttime, they are not permitted for public activity uniformly. Correct. So I read the things out there about, you know, sort of what this ordinance is attempting to do. But 95% of what this ordinance appears to be doing, we pretty much already do and apply to the properties we own as a city. For any number of those reasons, most of this is already fairly enforceable. And so I'm trying to figure out, and maybe it's best, if it could be explained to me, the differentiation between maybe timeliness or things like that as it applies to enforcement of not being able to reside or, or recreate on those properties 24/7 to begin with.
And also, this comes at an important time where Annapolis is trying to legalize, where you can set up a tent in public parks right now. 487, I've already wrote in my testimony on that bill where they're allowed to go set up tents in public parking lots and sidewalks. And this, if that bill is passed in Annapolis, which I hope to God it doesn't, I think that would make a lot of people in the city not happy that we can't pass our own ordinances to look out for the tax paying residents here. Because when people pay taxes here, they don't want to see urination on public benches. They want to be able to use what they want to use and feel safe and, you know, allowing public tents are ready to go in parks. That's going to be a problem statewide, not just for Hagerstown. So.
Councilman Alshire, if I, if I can comment on that, I agree with your comment last time where you said this is not a silver bullet. And it's 100% not a silver bullet. It's not going to solve every problem. One example I would give would be a few years ago, do you remember when they were raided the police department? There was a huge camp that was set up. And you know, I mean, yeah, we, 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 we took a lot of flak for that. You guys took a lot of flak for that. And really, we couldn't do anything about it. And one thing that we learned about that camp was not everyone there was actually unhoused. They were coming just to hang out for the day. Because now it became a big party that they can just hang out. But they weren't blocking free passage. They had an entire encampment set up, but they weren't blocking free passage. And we couldn't do anything about it.
We had to get creative.
Yeah, we had to get creative and essentially look at environmental design to deal with stuff like that. This is essentially just giving officers an option to be able to do something if we absolutely have to.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is this, is this a manner of executing what we can already do, just doing it in a more timely way?
Well, I think it's also an added layer. I think this is more of a preventative tool. I know that we mentioned the last time that this is a very rare occurrence. It is very rare that officers are removing individuals from sidewalks, that they're removing individuals from the places outlined specifically in the ordinance that is, as it is written now. Because like you said, you already mentioned, folks can't be on private property that we have for utilities, water, things like that. To me, it's an extra layer of a preventative measure, especially with what's going on nationally. As we have this kind of push-pull to allow certain things to happen, I think we're, we've been very blessed here that we don't see a lot of, you know, folks sleeping on the street. I mean, we don't see it a lot. It is very rare. I think this just adds an extra layer, especially as we have more development downtown. One of the things that we are battling and our community partners are battling is as we continue to develop, whether it's warehouses, whether it's more businesses coming downtown, it's great that we have folks coming in and they're doing business here. But as we continue to develop and we remove woods and we remove trees, those camps that have been there for years that you didn't see, they were out of sight, out of mind, they're now moving in closer into the city. They are, they're, they're more visible than before. And I think that this is more of a preventative measure in case we start seeing an increase. And again, it is not a silver bullet. And we do have to look also at big picture solutions, which we have been trying to work on because we know that this is just a tool. This is just a tool in the toolbox and we still have work to do.
So, so an example, sir, of, of how this would help my guys would be, you know, two months ago, we had a guy that was sleeping under one of the underpasses. And in like a three hour period, we got like eight calls on him. We went over, checked on him, asked if he was okay. Yes, he's fine. Would you mind moving? No, I'm not moving. He's sleeping in a sleeping bag, not blocking free passage, nothing we can do. But unfortunately, then it, it eats up at the officer's day because we're continuously getting calls on this guy. And people saying, can you move him along? No, we can't. We can't do anything.
Yeah, we should be empowering you all to have the tools to do that. So.
So I guess, I guess that brings up my curiosity. I'm looking at Steve behind the chief there. We, we define and regulate camping in the city of Hagerstown, right? Just like Washington County defines and regulates camping. On property. No matter what property is, whether it's publicly or privately owned, those two governmental entities regulate, they define what camping is and they regulate camping. And they do it in the sense of, of really defining and regulating what a campground is, but they don't really say that. What they say is, here is how you're allowed to permit camping under these specific processes within the regulatory process of those two governmental entities. So I say that because we could apply that application to our properties in an absolutely similar manner. It'd probably take longer and we would simply be enforcing those rules upon ourselves. But it would take longer. And I guess that gets my timeliness question. But I think the second half of that is, is as it applies to those properties we're not talking about today, the private properties of other parties. If we define and regulate camping within our code, we should absolutely be able to determine, and especially in those instances where it is clearly a multitude of individuals, and let's take the property off Eastern Boulevard, right? We're, we're all aware of it. It exists. You can see it when you drive by. But that is a, 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 at some points of the year, a sort of de facto campground. And that's how it's being utilized. And so for those properties that we're not applying it to today, because I agree, there are definitely sort of multiple sides of, of perspective on folks that do and don't want this. For the folks that, that, that clearly support this legislation, you know, being in that toolbox, for those other properties, we should absolutely be able to say to the property owner, it appears you have a campground on your property. You know, campgrounds are, are defined by X in our code, they're regulated by Y. If you're not doing that, you know, then. Because I think that part of the, the conundrum that folks have pointed out in, in social media is if we regulate this on our properties, which we already do, I just said, we, we already do that, like 95% of it, we already do, you know, then is the push going to be for it to go to other properties? And if that occurred, as it absolutely occurs now, then we do have the tools within our toolbox to apply, although a much lengthier process, the application of those codes to those other properties.
For campgrounds, as far as the zoning ordinance goes, we do define them, we're permitted in one zoning district by special exception of the zoning appeals. The only thing I would caution, and I believe Councilman Alshire just kind of touched on this briefly, and that is when it comes to a situation where you have people calling eight times a day or something like that, your code enforcement and your police enforcement aren't going to be able to give much quicker response than going through the zoning enforcement process, which would take weeks or months.
Which I think is what I've been trying to get across here in this moment, is to get that confirmation from the folks on the police department here is to say to the folks out there, we can already do all this stuff. We're simply looking at enacting legislation that allows us to do it in a more timely, simple manner.
Yes, sir.
It isn't anything absolutely new that we're creating. We're simply creating something that does it in a more timely, effective manner.
And efficiency, efficiency for, for taxpayers, as, as officers are being able to handle it. Instead of the camp that we, that we talked about in the underpass, I mean, that took, I believe, I want to say close to three months. Somebody passed away and it, it took a long time before we were able to actually get the beans to, to get the individual that was the anchor for that camp to move on. So this, this would give us that tool that we could use. And again, it's, it's a tool, just like a tool in your garage that you use maybe once, once a month, once every two years. It's, it's there, you use it when you need it. But outside of that, it's, it's just, it's in your garage. You don't want to go get it.
I just had a few questions regarding like the penalties. So would mine be, if they're, if they're subject to a fine not exceeding 500, is there like different tiers, like levels of the fines that they can receive or?
That's standard. Yep. And yep, that's, that's based off city code and the city attorney work.
Okay. And I guess what separates them from receiving both? So the second part says that they may receive the imprisonment for not exceeding 60 days or both, like the 500 and.
A judge, honestly. So the judges, for, for every crime, essentially, there's always a max. And you can always do both. But that in reality, that's not actually what happens. You're not going to get max penalty on both. Typically, you're going to get one or the other and it's usually the fine, especially with something like this. It's, you know, that's just the standard for city code.
And then the last one, sorry, under section C, where it says that they may be directed to vacate the, the public place or they may be offered social services. What will differentiate, like the difference on what they're going to be offered?
So I think, I think currently, I would venture to say almost all of our officers when they're on the scene. And I brought you the resource guides that they all have available to them. There's, this, this is the stack. Every officer has availability of all of these social service resources and they offer them at any time currently. They call me, they call our crisis intervention team. So they always are calling us. That is something that we already do. And so that will always happen. It is, it currently happens and it will continue to happen. So that's always happening.
If I could, I'd like to bring up that we just recently received a compliment from a citizen. He identified himself as homeless. That was, that's how he addressed himself in the, in the call panel. And he thanked our officer, the officer that was on the call with him. He thanked him for his courtesy to him. He said he was actually contemplating not doing good things to himself. And because of that officer's courtesy and the way that the compassion the officer gave him, he feels the officer saved his life. So, I mean, that came in just last week. So that, that's an example that our officers are out there. We do have compassion. This isn't, you know, what, what some people painted it out to be. It's just a tool that, that we feel would be helpful to the police department in making Hagerstown, keeping Hagerstown the place that it is.
And, and also let me assure you of something. When we get these calls, we're never going to walk up and be like, all right, that's it, you're under arrest. That, that actually doesn't happen. You know, it's, it's not like you see in the movies. We're going to go, we're going to say, hey man, can you get up and get moving? Like, we're getting a lot of calls. This is not something. We, we really don't have time to deal with a lot of that stuff. We're so busy. So, but this is a tool if they're like, nope, forget you. I'm laying here all day and there's nothing you can do about it. Then we have something we can actually do. That's literally all that's, yes. It never happens where we get a call and we go, okay, you're under arrest. You know, that's, that's not reality. We always try to work things out and smooth things over and get them services that they need.
And we don't arrest people for being homeless.
Our job is not to arrest people. Our, our job is to, to solve the issues in society. Arrest is a tool that we can use, but that's not our, that's not our end goal. We don't walk up, you know.
Right. It's not the main goal.
No, our goal is to, is to make every situation as amicable and, and resolve it for everybody involved so that everybody gets the best interest. It doesn't always happen that way, but we, we do what we can. Every, in my opinion, every single time that we've come across those situations.
So thank you for sharing that. I just think it's something that they have to hear publicly coming from you all, especially once it becomes public information, you know, things get taken out of context. So as long as you guys are announcing that.
And I, I, on top of, of this ordinance, we, I would like to do a flyer to social media just kind of explaining it in people's terms, in people terms. Hey, this doesn't mean you can't do this, this and this. This is what this means. This is how it's explained.
I'd be open to that. I think that.
I talked about that with Lieutenant Lewis, and that's one more step to this ordinance than just saying, hey, hey citizens, this is, this is what the law actually means.
Right.
A few comments. So going back to last conversation, the drive, one of the drivers was the Supreme Court with the grand pass versus Oregon case, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I say that because, just because the Supreme Court says that localities can enforce criminal penalties, doesn't mean that we should. And I thank you guys for your service as far as interacting with the homeless population, answering the calls when there are complaints. But I think that, like Councilman Alshire said, we already have tools that we could use when it comes to enforcing individuals off of city property, right? And I think that this ordinance, to me, is, is looking like is criminalizing the unhoused. I know you guys are saying, this is not the idea. I get that. I'm not that. Thank you. But to me, I feel like we should have a little bit of different approach. One, the data. When I mentioned about families being homeless, Ashley mentioned there's only a few families. And also then Councilwoman Bell mentioned the story of, of a gentleman that comes to her restaurant that works, but is unhoused. And also then Councilwoman Bell mentioned the story of a gentleman that comes to her restaurant that works, but is unhoused. And she mentioned that it's only a few individuals that do not move when police says to move. So I'd rather see the data to understand the full extent of what we're talking about here. How many families do we know of that's unhoused? Men, women, age, you know, do they work? They just happen to, can't afford affordable housing? I mean, just February twenty-fifth, as a body, we approved as focus area number one, Affordable Housing and Homeless Solutions. And one of the buckets is to examine strategies to reduce homelessness, including working with our homeless coalition and stakeholders. I feel like this ordinance, we're going to step backwards. We should look at the data. We should continue to collaboration with the stakeholders on what we can do as a city. And also investment. How can we further help the homeless solution versus having another ordinance in place that says, yep, you're unhoused, you're on city property, you'll be fined, or possibly imprisoned? And, you know, I get that we have citizens who are concerned about the homeless population. And we also have citizens who are, they're concerned about where they're going to go. Like that was my question I asked like a lot of times last time. Where are they going to go? Or are they going to go to the private properties? All of that stuff is still like in the air for me. So for me, I can't just say, yep, this looks good. Because as a city, not as a city government, but as a city as a whole, I don't think we're ready for this conversation. Yes, there's societal issue. You cannot fix homelessness. You cannot fix it.
I think you've been ready for this conversation.
We can be ready all we want to.
People expect us to do our job and actually pass stuff to help the people here. And just, you're going to say they're not even supporting ordinance at all for this? I mean, you're going to slap the taxpaying residents that cry every single meeting to this? And just tell them their concerns don't matter? That's what you're doing.
We have a side to form here. And I was speaking, so interrupting was inappropriate.
Wait, she's just...
I was not finished.
She's just sharing, let her share her perspective and what she feels is still in limbo. Let her, go ahead.
Oh, I am. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Like I was saying, yes, conversation has come up, but I feel as a city as a whole, we're not ready to say homeless, unhoused, lodging out of doors is prohibited. That's all. Thank you for letting me speak.
I think everybody's had more of their emotions on this the last year. That's what I campaigned on, was to clean up the drugs crime and homelessness, which is an epidemic. And right now, it shows you, if this body cannot pass this ordinance, there's not a whole lot they can do when it comes to homelessness here.
Let me say something. So Ashley, to your thing, to what you said preventative, this is really not a preventative measure. Preventative is when you start it before it happens. So it's more or less like a restorative method. But I seen where you was going with it. I'm kind of leaning with Councilwoman Burnett, only because it's like, we have to think more of resources and what can be provided because we cannot change the unhoused. So many people, like for example, an eviction stays on your record like a felony. So people that are unhoused, that could be looking for housing and put in their application or whatever, cannot get it because of that eviction. So they're in limbo of what they can do next. Honestly, I think it, like you said, it's more work. I think this would be more work for you guys if you have to go out every single time that you get a call to try to see, you know, if it's going to be a fine, if it's going to be imprisonment. I just don't feel like that is the way, the direction that we should go. We should always try to think of different resources that can be provided for these people that are unhoused, that are looking for somewhere to go, that have their children with you. And I know you say that when it comes to the children, you're on it. But it's so much that we can think about more, like this conversation before we implement this. And like, I mean, I...
You just don't want to do anything.
No, I mean, hold on, just a second. One second. Because I feel like, how can you charge? Yeah, Councilmember. How can you, how can you implement a five hundred dollar charge on unhoused? To me, it doesn't sound right. Because I, you know, they don't have, whether it's been imprisonment or the fine, I just can't follow that. And you're already saying that you're trying to, that you will also send them to social services. That should be, that should be the route that we should try initially.
That's what they already do. They hand those out.
I know.
Would you use more, to what she's saying, would you use more resources with your department? If you didn't have the ordinance?
No, I'm not saying that if they're being, you know, totally combative.
No, ma'am. So, and you kind of brought the point, you said you felt that it would waste resources if we had to go out every single time.
Not waste resources.
No, I'm sorry.
Because you say that's your time, like you don't, you know...
Yes, ma'am. I misspoke what you said, but we're already doing that. Every time people call, we have to, we go. If you call, you're getting a police officer. Whether it's someone, in these instances, it's going to be a police officer. So we're already sending people out every single time anyhow. So like Lieutenant Lewis said, when people call eight times a night, if there are eight instances of calls and we've already addressed it, we will go eight times.
And also, ma'am, if I can comment on that also, the fines and stuff, we have nothing to do with that. That's all, that backwards.
But I'm saying it just sounds...
But please understand, like, we're, unfortunately, a lot of times, people are going to get arrested anyway and they don't have the money. We don't have anything to do with that. And typically, the judges show a lot of leniency on that. So I think unfortunately, like this kind of, and I hope it doesn't look this way. It looks like, you know, the big bad police are coming in, we're trying to lock people up. That's not, that's not it. And I don't want you to think that. Because I think, you know, you guys know, and I know Ms. Burnett's always been very supportive of us. You know, we are a great department and the guys are so good and compassionate with people. And just like, they bend over backwards honestly to get help and get the services. And we're seeing so many new faces every day. I hear the officers telling me all the time, we got all these new people that are influxing into the city. And what they're telling the officers is, they hear that they have the, we have the services here. Whereas like Frederick doesn't have the services, but Washington County, Hagerstown does have the services. You know, food and phones and shelter's not one of them, clearly. Shelter's not one of them, but for those things. So we are seeing a ton of new faces and it's for that reason. So I don't, you know, I don't want to come off as, you know, we're going to use this and we're really going to lock some people up. Because it ain't going to be that. I'll be honest with you. It'd be citations. So, you know, I certainly understand.
That, you know, that you're trying to come in. I don't, that's absolutely not how I'm thinking of it. I'm just thinking of what, you know...
As far as social services are concerned, if I may, we've had this discussion many times. We've tried an alternative response team that we had no one apply for. So right now, as far as social services through the city DHPD, it's mostly just me. And that's a lot for one person. And when we discuss social services, I know that the city administrator brought in all of the social service agencies when we were dealing with the letter and folks came in. There were some folks that turned his offer down to come in. I think that as Councilwoman Burnett said, we have to have a much larger, not just a city government conversation. We have to be real with each other, with these social service organizations, with the nonprofit world, with funding sources. I would encourage you all, you know, because there's so many moving parts. You know, you mentioned the drugs. I encourage you, go to meetings at the health department. Go voice your opinions. Go get educated on what it looks like on their end. Because there's so much that these organizations go through with funding, what they're able to spend things on. There's been lots of conversations about opioid restitution funding that I'm sure they would welcome your input. We have lots of community partners that have had funding cut off. So there are things that they just simply can't do right now. So services that they could offer, that they can't. The local homeless coalition is going through some changes right now. I just encourage you all too, to get involved in those meetings and those conversations. I'm happy to send you invites so that you can be included, so you can share those at those meetings, get an understanding, and then maybe we as a city can collaborate a little bit better with those organizations. Because our goals don't always align. The goals don't always align, just, and we need them to. And having that conversation where we can bring them together and our goals align, and the city administrator, we've tried this many times. But I think having everyone together, having the council involved would be super helpful and kind of getting that moving forward.
Yeah, I'm on board. I think this is the least we can do. And I think we need to pass something as a body here instead of just saying, let's keep talking about it and just keep bringing it up. Because you don't really want to pass anything on it, so.
Well, I was going to put this up first back to, as we're talking about those unfortunate. We are United States, right? I believe many of us are one illness away, one situation away, one paycheck away for being in the same situation that some of these people that we're talking about. So for me, that's where I'm thinking about this ordinance. Not all of us are born with silver spoons. Not all of us have investments. Not all of us have savings. There's people that, as we speak, are losing their jobs the way this country is being set up and could be war on these city properties that we're talking about. Again, we already have, we already have ordinance in place that we can enforce. I just feel like as this is written and as it's presented, it's like criminalizing those unfortunate.
Can I speak to a couple of things? So, so I hear, I hear what you're saying. And we knew this was going to be what some people felt, that this was criminalizing homelessness. Before I ever brought this to the table, before I came to you guys, I brought this concept and this ordinance to the homeless coalition partners, all the social service agencies and nonprofits. They don't have a problem with it. I wanted them to hear that before I came here. What you don't see, you're putting what you know. What you don't see is the change in the society in that population. And that change is, they're more aggressive, they're more combative, and they're more anti... They're not volunteering to abide by the rules. So we have situations, and it's limited. I think the last time we were here, we said, over the course of a year, this might affect ten people. May affect ten people total. The majority of the people we come across that are homeless, this is never going to even be approached as an applied. Because one, they're either not on public property. They're on private property that we've been asked to come and deal with because the private property owner wants us to come do that. But if they are on public property, we show up and we're like, you got to move. And they grab their stuff and they leave. We still try to help. We still do all the social services, referrals. We do all those things that we can do. On those occasions, and the gentleman we talked about just, you know, a couple of months ago, who refused after countless times of showing up, laying, sleeping on the sidewalk, getting those constant calls, that is eating up our resources because we have to keep going back. And there was no recourse for him. There is nothing in any other ordinance that would allow us to deal with that individual. So that's where this would apply to an individual like that, that's just being combative in that sense. The other thing that this does, that we didn't talk about in here, and I may have talked about it the last time, is this allows us to use the court system as a tool. Because even though the ordinance says it could be five hundred dollars and/or this, as every other ordinance in state law has, in that judges are never going to issue a fine to someone who doesn't work and has no money or income. They just don't do that. You know, they find them unable to do so, so they don't apply a fine to them. They're never going to get that. But they can put them on probation, they can do all those other things and order them into programs as part of that probation. That's where this can help. It's going to possibly cause some of those people to be in front of an authoritarian figure like a judge to say, you will go to your addiction treatment, you will go to mental health treatment as prescribed by the court. And in violation of doing that, then you can be a violation. Then you may do jail time. Then those things may happen. And as we've seen countless times with people with substance abuse issues, sometimes it takes going and getting arrested and going in front of a judge to get the help they actually need to become not using anymore. And that's where we feel that this is going to be the biggest benefit of this ordinance. As for, I agree with you, you know, it may not be prevented because it's already happening. But what this can do preventatively is send a message to those people that are coming into our community because of whether they're coming in for the resources or saying that's what they're coming in for, or whatever that case may be, is to let them know, you can't come here and set up ten cities. You can't come here and do these things because it's against the law. You can't do that. So you won't be able to do that here. So if that's what you're going to come here thinking that you've got, you may have free rein, we're a small community, those things come happening, we now have an ordinance that says you can't do that. Yes, can't do it in a park because the parks are closed and we can charge you with being in the park after not, after closing. We have all those other tools that we would use. But in those circumstances that happen ten times a year, where we don't have any recourse because there is, there's gaps that are there, we have nothing that we can do, which lends to huge frustration. Not just to the community, but to the men and women that show up on those calls every single day. Eight times you're showing back up. And what I don't want, what I do not want, is that frustration to lend to an officer to do something that's going to get them in trouble. Because that frustration might be taken out on an individual in the community because they're frustrated that this is the six times, seven times they're showing up on the same night. I don't think that would happen. I think our guys are very professional and won't. But I got to think about those things too. And I do, I, this is not something I wish we would have to, I wish there was other recourse that we could do that we didn't have to put this out. We didn't have to put this in play. I wish there was a lot more resources here that would provide housing and ability to get people into a place. That is not something that I think that we can do as a city government. But I mean, that's, that's out in that other world. And as Ashley's talked about, money's drying up. You know, we have a ton of resources, but if you don't have, if you don't have the housing stock to put people in, then it doesn't matter about those other resources for the housing stock part of it. So are we going to move them to private property? Some, but I think people are primarily not on public property much anyway. And when they are, they're going to private parking lots and things like that that we'll still get calls for. We're still going to have to remove them on. And this ordinance won't apply to them because they're not on public property. So we're going to deal with them any other way we can. They fail to leave in those properties, they get locked up for trespassing because they're on private property. So there's a recourse, which is the same, similar to fine that you would see there, they got locked up for trespassing. It's, you know, those charges still apply to those same things. So I want you to understand that we're not in any way, shape or form trying to criminalize homelessness. We are trying to find a, an ability to meet the needs of those gaps in the issues that we have going on in our society today beyond helping, beyond those other things that we still need to work on. And that we do. We are part of the homeless coalition. I've been part of the homeless coalition for ten years. I've been part of the homeless coalition for ten years. I've got staff that attend a variety of different community groups and meetings to work on solutions based stuff. It has nothing to do with law enforcement, has nothing to do with what we're doing in terms of enforcing laws. But we touch these people every day. More than anybody else, we touch these people. So we have the best ability to try to help those organizations come up with better plans because of what we see. We see it across the board, all the way around. We hired Ashley, one of the community liaison coordinators, to work with those community resources to try to coalesce that a little bit better. And I think it's worked to the best of our ability. But the reality is, there's our independent organizations and agencies that are going to abide by the rules they have and their money. But they get through those grants, is very specific about how they can spend it. And a lot of times, there's barriers put in place from how they can do that as well. So it's a complex, huge issue. I agree with you one hundred percent. And again, I sympathize with the decision that this body's got to make to explain or try to justify that you're not creating a law that's criminalizing homelessness. But I don't know what else we can do when we come across those individuals that is a growing population for us. People that are just being combative, that our community partners, people that work in this field of people with mental health and substance abuse issues that are homeless, and as part of that, that are growing to be afraid of their own population that they weren't afraid of before. Those things are starting to happen in society. And it's become that, across the board, outside of homelessness, it's just the nature of our society's become a very combative society anyway. But that's translated down to people that have other issues. Their mental health issues and their substance abuse issues that maybe expands that a little bit more, you know, abruptly to people and can see a little bit more. So we're trying to help everywhere across the board. I can tell you, you know, Officer Ortiz was the officer that got this, you know, he's a fairly new officer. And when I told him today that that compliment came in, he said, you just made my day. He said, that's what I do this for. I love that I heard that. He thought that was just fantastic that he had that kind of an impact on someone. And that's every day, all the time. As I told you before, our guys are spending their own money to put families into a hotel for the night. Buying pizza for the kids so that they have someplace to go when it's cold. It's like, I've done it. I know these guys have done it. And they're spending their own money to do that.
Seeing the homeless coalition did endorse this ordinance.
They, I wouldn't say endorsed, they understand. They, I wouldn't say endorse, they understand and they didn't oppose. They didn't oppose it because they understand where we are coming from. They understand what we do as a police department and how we approach these things. You know, there may be some members of the coalition that, that would say they, again, they're against it, but the majority of them, no one.
Yeah, I mean, we gave them the opportunity to ask questions. I sit on the board with homeless coalition. I mean, everybody asks their questions. They. Um, and I think, again, as the chief mentioned, we've just seen a change in society as a whole and attitudes and the combativeness. And I think even those organizations serving people have seen a change. And so they also want things to be addressed too.
Well, California is cleaning up a lot of the homeless encampments with Gavin Newsom's executive order. So if California's doing it, we can certainly do it.
And, and I don't wanna see that. I don't want to ever have to go in and remove families into, like, I, that is the worst feeling in the world to have to do that. And so I'm. I'm also hoping that this, again, I use that word preventative, but. If this prevents someone from setting up a tent and moving their family in here and then having to be removed later, and then we can catch them before that happens some other way. That's what I would like to see happen.
And there's other things in, in the works to address what you're talking about that. For a large part are out of our control, but we are part of, we are part of that discussion. We're very. I wouldn't say optimistic at this point in time, but, uh, but we, we're hopeful that, 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 that plan can move forward. And if it can, I think we'll see a, a pretty good change and an opportunity that we don't have right now. That's a, a, a partnership that's gonna be built on, on private partnership with. Limited, um, uh, input from this, from city government, but due to nonprofits and private partnership that, that want to address and help this issue. And if that can happen, um, a lot of this is gonna give us a lot more tools that, you know, to help people beyond this. I mean, just in that, where can they go? If this can come to fruition, that would be a huge, a huge gain for Pecos County and Washington County. So, but you know, not able to really talk about that here right now because of this, just at the preliminary stage, but that's, that's something we're working on. So we're, we're never stopping working on those, there's other things.
Did, did you, did this come from numbers? Like, I mean, are you keeping like data, numbers or like. Like, oh, we had such a huge number of, and then that's why.
We, we don't keep, we don't keep numbers like that per se as, as part of the police department. Uh, the homeless coalition, they do a point in time, which is. It can be looked at, it's a growing number, but talking to the men and women of the police department and talking to command staff, it's a growing problem.
That works without when they do the point in time, which is a one night count of homeless.
It's set up by the.
In the winter.
In the winter, it's a certain day that they have to do it.
It's not, not super.
It's not super accurate.
We've been helping, we've been helping in the past couple of years and, and with that, with those numbers, we were able to determine a much higher number because we were helping. We knew where people were that they didn't know. But we know, and it's anecdotal, but you know, because we don't capture that data, it's police department, that those numbers are growing.
And, and I think the list right now, so the continuum of care list, there's a list that when you are homeless, you can go to a couple of different organizations. C A C being one of them to sign up for the list for, uh, housing. And that list of actually, so again, and I encourage you to go to these meetings, go ask questions. Because everyone's definitions are different. I know we've talked about this before. But those chronically homeless on the street that need housing, I think the last number of the homeless coalition meeting was around two hundred and sixty. That's in individuals, chronically homeless, head of household. Now, again, I'm, I always throw this out there because everyone's definitions are different.
Individually or families or like.
Individuals. Applications, individuals. So when we're talking about homelessness, again, everyone's definitions are different. And that's why I encourage you, join boards, go to meetings, ask all the questions. Because I know that, and I always throw this out there, there's, the Board of Ed uses an act, I forget the name of it, to count their homeless youth within the school system. You can essentially live with your friend and you're considered homeless. That counts as homeless based on their definition. That's something that is, is defined by. Correct. So, so there's, so it's over, it's like seven hundred, however.
But they're not on the street.
Even if they're sleeping on a friend's house.
Right. Things don't have their own family house. They're living with friends.
Couch surfing, they're going to friends' houses, you know, I mean, I've been there, I get it. According to that definition, I was homeless when I was a teenager. So. But when I, I don't, again, ask those questions because that's a very stark number when you hear there are seven hundred homeless youth in the county. That sounds very scary. They're not on the street. They have roofs over their head. They're get, you know what I mean? Of course they need more support. But I don't want you all to think that those are seven hundred kids on the street. Cause obviously we would certainly have a different response if that were the case.
But they, I don't, I guess, they may look at it for students. Since they at least have a couch and are homeless, but for adults, they can't go get resources and say they're homeless. If they have a couch to sleep on, so they're not allowing.
Adults are completely different. And again, that's why I would encourage you to come to homeless coalition meetings, really insert yourself and ask questions. Go meet with C A C, go meet with Horizon Goodwill, ask those questions. Um, but again, that two hundred and sixty-two number is that chronically homeless that I told you about. And again, that number might have fluctuated. I haven't looked at the number recently. Um, but those would be the adults that are chronically homeless on the street, on that list waiting to get into transition.
And, and not everybody that you see on the street that you think is homeless are homeless. Quite a, quite a big number are not homeless. They don't work. They hang out on the street, they live on the street in, in a sense, but they're not homeless. Some of them might sleep on the sidewalk because of their other issues, but they have someplace to go, they have a home, but they choose to just be on the street. Uh, that would, that would impact them if they become combative and they're bedding down and doing that, and they could possibly have someplace to actually be. And choosing not to do that. Um, quite a few of the panhandlers we've had on the dual highway, a couple of years ago, was a whole, was a family. That lived in the county and they would go and panhandle every day to make their money.
Drive there.
They would drive there, panhandle and then drive home to their house. And so a lot of what we, we see is not truly homeless people either, but they. Live or present a lifestyle that looks like they're homeless, um, for whatever reason, whatever their reasons are. But again, you know, you never wanna just create an ordinance for something minor and small or what appears to be that. If we're talking this is gonna affect ten people in a year that could potentially be charged with, with this. You know, that's still ten people that could eat up a significant amount of our resources during the time we're dealing with them. And as the lieutenant said, we're not gonna show up the first time and just. Give you a citation or make an arrest. We're gonna give you every opportunity to voluntarily comply, which is what we do with almost every law that we deal with. Voluntarily comply and you go, you get to go free. I mean, how many people get stopped for some kind of a moving violation in their car? And if you're polite and nice in the car. You know, you got a likelihood that you're gonna get off a little less than if you're not. If you're not, then you're gonna get, okay, I'm gonna raise you the ticket for your seatbelt and your speeding and you didn't have your registration on you. You're polite, you might just get a seatbelt violation and you're gonna get a warning for the speeding. That's how law enforcement, at least here in Hagerstown and Washington County, that's how we approach it. Um, we got bigger fish to fry than to just arrest someone who's sleeping out of doors on the sidewalk because. You know, that's not what we wanna do. But we've gotta address that when there's no other option. And we can't keep going back eight times in a single day and have the community say, why didn't you do anything? Well, because the law, the constitution, everything else says we can't. And that, that becomes problematic. And then we're working on longer term solutions, environmental designs to change things up, which we will still do. To, to prevent, you know, activity that's just not wanted by our community. But I agree with, with Ashley. I think getting involved with the, the, the community coalitions that, that work on these things. Get a better understanding of where they are and their barriers and what they can do and what they can't do and the funding sources. Might help you guys drive some different, you know, ways of dealing with it here as a council. You know, I would love to see more opportunities for us to get people into some kind of a, a, a home or shelter or something like that. It just don't exist right now. It just don't.
So I'm sorry, Chief Krieger. Can I just make a, uh. I guess like a suggestion or just kinda hear your guys' uh, feedback on what, what you would think on this. Being that like council member Alshire already stated, there is already an ordinance in place, but this is more of a tool. For those individuals that are gonna be more combative, um, going back to the, we don't have enough data, going back to, we don't have. That end goal for them to, like a place, like that place. What is it possible? Has it ever been done? Could we run some kind of trial probation period for them to have this in their back pocket? For like three months or six months, so that within that timeframe, we can maybe collect the data. Work on that end goal, that place on, you know, where they can go. And then at the same time, speak with the community partners to find out. Sorry, like those exact numbers of how many of those people were actually going, how many of those people were actually being arrested. How many, how many of those folks actually went before a judge and what was the outcome? And then from there, we can kind of maybe circle back at the end of that four month or that six month and based on all those gatherings. Have a true definite on, we're gonna finalize this or we're not. I don't know if it's ever been done. I don't know if it can be done. I just kinda wanted to hear from you guys. What would you think?
No, I think we should have the ordinance, but I don't know. I don't think we should have a probationary period. It's only gonna affect ten people per year anyway, so.
I, I mean, I think it'll solve like everyone's.
We're never gonna pass anything. If you keep saying, let's bring it in front of us, just tell me you don't wanna vote for it, or anybody else does, so.
No, but the way that I look at it, Sean, right? It's like, we, we would pass it for a time period so that we have. That data, and then at the same time, we're working on the bigger purpose is the end goal of where these individuals can go.
We should have an evaluation period to begin with when we can just vote on the ordinance.
Well, we go to ordinance as it stands, I'm enough.
Okay.
I support the ordinance as it stands. Watered down, we won't have any enforcement.
Is that something that you think can be?
We could sunset the ordinance after six months.
That's what I, that's what.
For a reevaluation.
Yeah.
You want.
Take you two months to get it through.
Until you wanna carry it.
Cause you have to introduce it and then you have to sit.
So it'll be June eleventh or August eleventh that it'll come back.
No, it would take, uh, introduction in March, it would take April to enact the ordinance. So then you go six months from April. October would be when you would come by.
And that's what I'm saying. And then they would have that data.
Say that, say that again.
You would have a six month, this ordinance would be for a six month period.
Because it just will take time.
Yeah, that, which is what Councilmember Anderson's saying.
So that way Chief Krieger.
Evaluate, evaluate the program to see.
How was it?
What the impact of it is.
So it's a trial. He, he would come back and say, guess what?
This is how many people.
I've only made three arrests. I've spent twenty-five people here.
So, but then after that six months.
Based on what data we collected.
We don't really need it, or yeah, it's, it's.
Because if it's not doing what.
Let's go with it if.
I'm trying to hope.
We got to, so.
I, I do, I just wanna see the numbers and the data and.
And if it's not something worth exploring.
Like if it's not something really worth.
Comes back, and it comes back not the way you're expecting it.
I'd rather have the data now, you see, but we can't. But what, so why, so what's the, what's the rush right now to say, yep?
If you don't enact the, the sunset ordinance, you won't be able to collect any data.
You get what I'm still saying?
So the data on the arrest, I'm talking about that of the unhoused population. Of how many of those, how many cars are we getting?
I mean, we can certainly give you data on the no trespassing, I mean, and they're in the thousands.
What was the, we did the six month study last year and it was eight years of man hours.
Alright, hold up. This one, this probably one at a time. Alright, who's up? So she has for some data. We looked at, uh, we looked at dealing with social service calls last year. We did a six month study and we base it off of two officers gone, two social services calls, you know, like a welfare check or. Whatever, because they're typically two officer calls. And when we looked at that timeframe in a six month period, it was eight years of man hours. That we were using on social service calls. That obviously doesn't have a lot of impact on this because again, this is gonna be so minute, like the chief said ten times. I think even after six months, we're gonna come back and I'll be honest with you, I'll, I'll be blown away if we have more than two people that were charged. I'm not even gonna say arrested because. It's, it's with the state of Maryland's laws, we actually have to, we have to start out with a citation. Uh, we don't go in with handcuffs coming in for, uh, minor violations like this. We start out low and obviously they're, they're combative or non-compliant and they're like, no. I don't, I'm tearing up the citation, then we have to escalate it, if that makes sense. Um, so.
To me, it just sounds like you're pretty sure you won't even have tents, so why even?
Uh, because like, like I said with Councilman Alshire, it, it's, it's a tool. Like if we get that guy that's like, I'm not moving. And there's nothing you're gonna do about it. And then I have to call Jim Bender and say, hey, I need you to build a wall at the underpass again. Uh, that kinda thing. So that's why it's, it's. The, the population's changing.
Yeah.
And, and the attitudes of the population are changing. And that's, that's where we're looking for this as that tool because they fall into that position that. We have no, we have no recourse. We have nothing that we can do as a tool. So because we're seeing that population change in terms of attitude. This gives us that tool to deal with that changing part of the population, not the other part. The other part of the population is voluntarily compliant. We're gonna help them and move them along. Yes, they're still gonna find someplace to go. They're still gonna be homeless, they're gonna do those things because they have no choices, but they're moving. And if, if I move, if I move to the person from here and then later in the night they're over here, that's a separate instance, something different. They're not at the same place they were. And you, yeah, we're probably gonna still spend, you know, time on some people just moving them all night long. They're gonna be, if they have to, we get a call, you gotta move and they move.
I mean, that's why the citizens academy, you guys just went to go visit folks and tell them, gotta move.
And we do that every morning. We do that every morning. Um, we just, we just met, um, earlier, uh, last week. At a, a, a facility, uh, just a little west of here, uh, just outside of the downtown core about homeless issues. And we vetted them to the list to do a morning roundup to make sure. And that's just to make them feel safe. They're on their property, they're not on public property, but we, they asked us to come do that. So we, we were gonna go do that. They're taking steps to address their issues, putting no trespassing signs on, things like that. But in the meantime, we're gonna help them as much as we can by just making them feel safe when they come to work, that there's not something, they have to step over somebody to get into their doorway. Those are the things that no one wants to deal with. Is that you show up at your home or your house or your business and have to step over someone that's homeless or sleeping or addicted or just unpassed out because they're. They're, they're substance abuse issues. Um, those are things that, you know, we still have to try to at least address the, the, the rest of the population that has to deal with that as well. So we're trying to find a balance. And again, this is a tool that we see that we think that would be beneficial to. That part of the population that might force them to get help because they have to get in front of a judge.
And I just see it as we're really getting ahead of something. I mean, we are growing as a city. We are bringing great projects here, great development. And, and unfortunately with that becomes more homelessness. The, the bigger that we get, the more that we grow, it's inevitably gonna bring more homeless in. And you know, I live in the city. I wanna make sure that if, if these guys need to do something, they have the tool readily available. Hopefully they don't need it, but having the tool there would be super helpful. Um, but again, as we continue to grow, we're going to have to address this. And, and back to Councilwoman Burnett's comment, it, it is a whole city, county, it is a whole county issue. This is not just a city issue. We have to come together as governments, nonprofits and really talk about how to address this and not just put Band-Aids on these issues. But how we can have long-term solutions. This is a tool for these guys, but it is going to take much larger, bigger conversations with everyone at this table. With the county commissioners, with nonprofit organizations. I also encourage you, talk to boots on the ground. I think a lot of times we go to leaders of, of nonprofits, we go to those leaders of organizations. They're not the ones doing the work. Ask the folks that are on the street doing the work. Ask them, get their opinion, see how they're interacting with individuals, what those folks need. Sometimes the folks at the top, they're always gonna tell you what you wanna hear. Start talking to people on the street, start talking to people doing the work. So all I'm saying is, again, this is not a, a, a one-time fix. This is not gonna fix everything. It is just a tool. Um, one of the many tools these guys would have, but I think to your point, we, we do need to, there's a whole nother part of this I think we need to address.
So, just so staff is clear. Do we have a three to come back with an ordinance for a sunset of six months after the ordinance is enacted? Or do we stay with, with the ordinance as it is and then it comes back for a vote in one way or another? What do we have?
I think, can, can we be?
So yet there's, if you look at it this way, there's only three ways that this can go. The best way that this can go is everyone's watching. The best way that this can go is everyone's watching this. This gets spread and nothing happens. We put this in for six months, and they come back and say, guess what? There's no need to even move forward, everyone shocked, afraid, forget it. The second way this can go is they can come back and say, man, we've made progression. We've cleaned up two or three people, they've actually utilized and got the help because they were seen in front of the judge or whatso, whatso. And then the third way is the route that we're all afraid of, is that it comes back and it solved nothing, it made everything a whole lot worse, and then we could use that six months as, that, that's a no-go. So there's only real, there's only really three ways that this can go. But it will not show it if we don't do a trial. We need an actual trial to see which way it would go. That, that's the only thing I'm comfortable with. Does that make sense? Yeah?
I'm very excited.
Ari said, no, that's just a proposed. But I'm thankful that you brought the issues, I'm thankful for your services for even bringing this to the table, because it is such a complex topic. But again, we understand there's issues, folks are in number one of our goals. Um, as, as this is proposed, I'm, I'm gonna know.
As, as it's proposed even without a trial?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay.
That's what I'm sharing.
I'm fine to vote on it either way.
What does that mean?
Okay, yep. So you're yes.
I'm just fine to vote on either way, whichever way you put it forward.
Oh.
I'm happy to vote on it at the end of the.
I do, Councilmember Anderson, I do like the way you put it. It is very complex. Um, I'm okay with the trial, as long as every step of the way, we are being informed, we understand.
We hear from, we hear from the community partners, because again, it can go left.
I think you need to do that more than just in this media, because otherwise, then it just becomes a an elongated process. I think, I think you need to go out and, and talk to the Homeless Coalition, HARC.
And I, I give my word, I'll, I'll send you the invite and say.
And then in the meantime, and then in the meantime, we will, we will come back on a regular basis, I can either do it through my comments or we can set aside five minutes and we can inform you on what what the current situation is, that, that staff is seeing out there, and whether there is actual need or not.
Other than folks at this, like what specific things, just for our awareness, because we're probably going to be the ones tracking it? What specific data points would you like tracked during this trial?
Instead, instead of, let's talk about that, let's talk about that separately and bring it back to you as to what, so what you're gonna say, we get into that now, we'll be here all night.
Yeah.
Let's bring that back. I think the, the bus have been, that have been experiencing this for, can, can bring that back to, back to the body.
Sounds great.
For their information. Okay? All right, thank you guys.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Great discussion, thank you.
All right, next up, Kathy Moore, Director of Planning Code, proposed tax amendments related to cannabis.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
I don't know if there could be more awkward segue than from your last topic.
Okay. Okay. Quick breaks, quick breaks, two.
Go ahead, start.
You can go ahead and start.
Thirty-one day, all right, anyway, please go ahead, yeah, that's right. Okay. We're here because the Planning Commission has forwarded a package of amendments related to cannabis, and we pulled them out separately. So if, if it comes to a vote, it's just on the cannabis, because we know already that Councilman Al Shar will vote against it, we don't want there to be, as we had in the last attempt at this package, the whole thing tanked because we needed his vote, but he couldn't vote because of the cannabis issue. So we're pulling it all out, so it's just cannabis for this set. And so they, they, there was a, a package of them that were in the twenty-twenty-four pa, amendments, which are that were now circulating with this administration, but we pulled out the cannabis. And then there was an additional one that came up as an economic development request rega, regarding our planned unit development Rs. And so, put that, those two together, so that's what's before you. And the public hearing is scheduled for March twenty-fifth. But I wanted to give you a little education, because this is a pretty complex topic, and it was the prior administration that was dealing with all the, um, activities that we did over the years to put this into our zoning ordinance. And so, state law, while still not legal on the federal level, the state has legalized cannabis for medical as well as recreational use. Several specific cannabis-related enterprises were spelled out in state law for licensing by the state with direction to the local government on how we are to treat those enterprises via zoning. A local government is not to unreasonably restrict the location of cannabis growers and processors and cannabis dispensaries. We may place separation requirements between cannabis dispensaries and from other specific protected community uses. And local governments may prohibit cannabis cafes, which we do. Uh, last year, the law was revised. Local government is now prohibited from having more restrictive provisions for cannabis dispensary, that's, that's cannabis stores than we do for alcohol retail stores. And new provisions were added for microenterprises and incubators. Our existing zoning provisions are, the indoor plant cultivation and processing facilities are permitted in our three industrial zones. And then also the smaller types of enterprises are permitted in the downtown CCMU and POM, which is our op, professional office. Cannabis dispensaries are permitted in our two more intense commercial zones as well as the two planned unit development types of categories. If they're located at least fifty, five hundred feet from any existing tobacco store, vapor or hookah lounge, or other cannabis dispensaries. And as I said previously, cannabis cafes, the onsite consumption facilities, those are not permitted. Existing zoning provisions for alcohol retail sales, right now, it's just considered retail. And we allow retail in any zone in the city where we allow commercial activity. Might be a smaller or middle size or bigger, but we allow it in, in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven zoning districts. So we are a lot more lax on the code for alcohol than we are for cannabis, and state law says we cannot be, we cannot, if we, we either make alcohol be like cannabis or cannabis like alcohol. And what we're proposing is to make alcohol like cannabis, in terms of how we treat it in the zoning ordinance. Otherwise, it, there didn't seem to be an interest before in having cannabis dispensaries all over the place, and so this would be putting the alcohol with the cannabis. Existing enterprises in the city related to cannabis, alcohol, tobacco, CBD sales stores. We have, we have three indoor plant cultivators and processors, that's the growers and the processors. And they're all on IR and IG zoned land. We have two cannabis dispensaries, just got a new one, and they are both on CR, commercial regional zone land. We have eighteen alcohol sales stores. Fifteen of them are on CG and CR zone land, which is what we're proposing to be, where they would be limited to. Two are in the CCMU zone land, which is downtown, and one is a non-conforming use on residential office zone land, that's the store that's down on South Potomac Street. We have seven tobacco sales stores in the city, and they are all in CG and CR's of zone land. We have two enterprises in the city that sell primarily hemp and CBD stores. And we have at this point, one vape hookah lounge in the city, also in CG zone land. The proposal that we have before you is to define cannabis incubator, one of the new uses the state created. And that's a state licensed facility to house micro growers, microprocessors, and microdispensaries. Microdispensaries are basically small warehouses, because they can't have, it's just delivery, they can't have a storefront. And then to define CBD and hemp stores, trying to get at those enterprises that that's their primary activity. There's a lot of other kinds of businesses that are selling some kind of CBD or hemp. But this is getting at the stores, that that's their primary business for being. And then revise the indoor plant cultivation and processing to delete it from the CCMU and the POM due to the odor that's associated with these uses, at least the ones that we have, the two first ones that we, we had going to the city. They, um, and having that kind of an odor permeating off the site in a setting where you have a lot of buildings close together, including housing, which is what the downtown is, or in an office apartment, felt it wasn't appropriate, and so we're suggesting we remove those, those uses from those two zones. And then allow, um, at, at, with a request from an economic development prospect, allow uh, the plant cultivation and processors of any size in the PUDR with the special design parameters of PUDs, which you'll be learning more about one after this, uh, presentation, since we have one before us, going through the process. Because with a planned unit development, you can devise, uh, special setbacks and spuff rings, and that might address any concerns someone might have. Um, propose also add cannabis incubators and allow them where we allow the indoor plant cultivating and processing, which is the three industrial zones. But not in the PUDR, which is, I think is an oversight, because we, again, we're having two packages coming together. And in the first package, we were taking it out of PUDR, and then we were asked to keep it in PUDR. So that's, I think that's why it's, it's, uh, incubators got just in the industrial zones and not in the PUDR. Um, and if it's over twenty-five thousand square feet in gross area, it's also allowed in the industrial mixed-use zone, but would need a special exception. Then add CBD slash hemp stores and alcohol beverage stores. Have them have the same provisions that we currently have in the code for tobacco stores, vapor or hookah lounges, and cannabis dispensaries, which is to allow them in the CG and the CR, which is where most of them are, and the PUDV and PUDR, which are two different classifications of planning developments, with a five hundred foot separation from one another. I Googled the liquor board to see what they do, because I know they have, whether, I just know they have not everybody who wants to do a liquor store can get a liquor store proof. And according to what I Googled, they already use five hundred feet as part of what they look at in terms of making sure the stores are dispersed around the community. So that would not be a new thing for alcohol stores. It would be new for them to have to be five hundred feet from all the other uses, but they already, for the, for the liquor board, have to be five hundred feet from each other. And then separation from protected community uses, state code spelled out these specific community uses as ones that can be, you can in your code create a separation distance. And so, what we're suggesting at the Planning Commission's recommendation is to include that in, not only do these uses have to be five hundred feet from each other, but they would have to be also five hundred feet from a school, uh, childcare providers, playgrounds, recreation centers, libraries, public parks, and religious sanctuaries. And then just to give you a little information about this, state law on the separation requirement. The distance between dispensaries, local government shall not require separation greater than one half mile. But it can be less, and of course, we are, we are a lot less. What, like almost have to evacuate. Anyway, we cannot require it to be more than one half mile, we're suggesting that just be five hundred feet, because that's a distance we are already using in our code. And then this, the distance from the protected uses, local governments shall not require separation distance greater than five hundred feet. And so that's, or it could be less, and so we're going with recommending five hundred feet. And the state law was putting this in there because the concern that some communities would set such a large separation distance that it would be impossible to do the use in the community, and the state didn't want that. They wanted there to be reasonable opportunities for these uses to be in any community. Yeah, and so because of the consistency issue, or the state law thing, we cannot treat cannabis dispensaries differently than we're treating alcohol sales stores. That's why we're suggesting using the five hundred feet from the protected uses as well. And that category of all the folks that are, they'll be subject to the five hundred foot separation of the tobacco stores, vapor or hookah lounges, cannabis dispensaries, CBD hemp stores, and alcoholic beverage stores. Uh, impact of changes to existing enterprises. As is typical for zoning ordinances, when you pass amendments that are enacted that would make an existing enterprise no longer meet the code, they don't, you don't say, okay, you got a month, get out. No, they, they have become what we call grandfathered or non-conforming uses, and they can continue to operate, provided they don't go completely vacant for a certain period of time. In our code, it's two years. Non-conforming uses can stay indefinitely as long as they don't go vacant for two or more years. If they do, then they would have to, property would have to come into compliance with the current code. And so, the next step would be a public hearing on March twenty-fifth. And then we've already scheduled a follow-up discussion on April eighth, so that I can be part of that discussion. I will be gone on April eleventh.
So, sorry Kathy, just a quick question, um. And I'm best with like examples. So I know that, um, they're outside of city limits, but when you say like five hundred feet, are you familiar with D-Bay? They're like in the Morgansville Shopping Center, next to Martin's.
Okay.
Um, so, right here, that door right over, that's like, uh, kids karate, like martial arts. So prior to them moving in, that used to be like a pet store.
Okay.
Would you say that that distance right there would be not, like, going towards the new amendments for the city of Hagerstown? This is something that would not be allowed?
A privately operated karate studio wouldn't, wouldn't fit into that definition.
Okay.
It would need to be something added.
Okay.
I'm, I'm opposed.
All ready?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be clear, I am absolutely in favor of the full legalization of marijuana.
I'm opposed to this ordinance as it is contradictory to our oath of office to uphold the Constitution, and so it's hard for me to say yes uh, to something when the entire premise of your oath is to say no to those things that are deemed illegal. Just, you know, and.
The, the only thing I would say to that, and, and, you know, I, I absolutely appreciate where Councilman comes from. But the state of Maryland is every session making it more flexible as to where cannabis can be consumed and where cannabis can be sold. And leaving it to the municipalities to try to reg, to allow us to regulate where that can be done at. And the only, like Kathy was saying, if if we don't legislate it on a local level, we may not be able to, because these, these dispensaries and whatnot will go in, and we won't be able to do anything about it, unless we begin to regulate it. That, that's the only appreciating and admiring how, where his stance is. It's, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place when it comes to that.
We totally agree, and where Councilman Al Shar is coming from, at the same time, we have to think about the fact that we wanna be able to regulate it somehow. And if we don't do anything, then we can't.
Right.
Well, we regulate it to the degree that the state government has decided to regulate it.
That's right.
Meaning, it wasn't okay until they owned the entirety of the rights to how it is okay. Right?
And making a.
They tell us why it's okay, right? First it was medication, and then it was for, you know, disparity in commerce. And, uh, they, they, they say, you know, who can sell it, uh, where you can buy it.
Who gets the tax money for it?
Just so. Yeah.
And they're saying we cannot prohibit the growers, the processors, and dispensaries. So if we don't say where in our city we allow them to go, then people weren't gonna be able to put them where they want to put them, and we don't want that. Could have industrial uses going places you don't expect to see industrial uses.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost done.
Next up, we got Steve Bachmiller.
She picked a great one to go out.
I was thinking the same thing, just smiling and everything.
I too will be here on April eighth, attired all in black. I've worked for Kathy for twenty-two years. Okay, um, I'm here today to give you all a briefing on, uh, a coming public hearing that you're going to be having on a proposed planned unit development or PUD, uh, map amendment to the Hagerstown zoning map. Uh, before I get started, I just want to caution you about the process, you'll be taking, uh, having a public hearing, will you be taking testimony, entering things into the record and creating a legal record for something that is, uh, controversial? It's gonna be coming to you with a negative recommendation from the Planning Commission, and, uh, we anticipate there's gonna be a lot of public opposition to it. So I would encourage you all, in order to, uh, to preserve the legal status of the situation, to, uh, not engage with the public outside of the hearing process. Because, uh, that could constitute what's called ex parte communication, taking information associated with something that you're gonna make, be making a legal decision on. The, to give you a little bit of a background, and, and also, because of that, I'm not gonna get into the weeds of the specific proposal here, I'm just gonna basically update you on the process. Uh, the city has for years had a provision in the zoning ordinance called a planned unit development overlay, this is a district that you get low overlay on the. This is a district that should get low overlay on the, the base zoning district with a particular development proposal. The residential area at Hager's Crossing is one, East Ridge is one. We found that the, a number of years ago, that the provision was barely used and really didn't accomplish much. So a few years ago, the PUD provisions were amended to make them more user-friendly, to encourage their use. They were also rewritten to basically create village environments, as opposed to places like Hager's Crossing, which is just essentially a residential subdivision, which really can't tell much difference between it and any other residential subdivision for the most part. So the provision that, or the way it's been revised, the role of the mayor and council is to basically approve the overall zoning for the property. It's not zoning by site plan, where they're coming in saying, this is where absolutely everything is going to be. It creates the zoning, and it also creates a mixed-use environment. The, and we wrote, we also wrote it, and the mayor and council adopted to be very flexible. Basically, it allows the applicant to propose their own zoning when it comes to bulk regulations, things like that, building heights, setbacks, et cetera, with no real limitation. Somebody could come in and say, we're going to propose this, and part of the area, we're going to permit an apartment building that's 15 stories tall. Not that they have here, but just to kind of give you an idea. The, it was also revised so that the applicant did not have to provide a whole lot of studies on the front end, such as the traffic study, et cetera, feeling that if the zoning is put into place, the developer would still need to go through the revision, the review process, that any other development would be when it comes to things like stormwater management, road capacity, et cetera. So what you're going to have here is a public hearing coming up on the 25th. And the applicant will be presenting to you their proposal. Staff will be also giving you an orientation to it in more detail, associated with the details of the actual application and the specific proposal. Just real quick, when it's about 112 acres, property fronts on the off-ramp from westbound Interstate 70 to dual highway, and also on Landis Road. And I believe a little bit also on a road that its name escapes me at the moment, Day Road, thank you, Day Road, on one side of the property. There's a proposed, proposed access would be off of Landis Road and off of dual, but I don't want to get anywhere, I don't want to get into any more weeds on it at this point. You ought to take all the information that's necessary for you to participate in, create a legally defensive position, decision, in the actual hearing itself on the 25th. So if you have any questions on the process or any of that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Joanna Wu, our planner.
So I'm here to talk about another proposed text amendment. This one is for our POM zoning district, or Professional Office Mixed-Use Zoning District. This proposal is to allow for more flexibility for permitted uses currently allowed in the POM zoning district. So we're trying to remove the performance standards currently outlined in the ordinance to allow them in the zoning district. It's reflected in the second page in the chart. We're trying to eliminate that, and by also allowing for more flexible use of fitness and outdoor recreation in the zoning district. So outlining the difference between, the difference between outdoor and indoor. So having, if you would like to have outdoor fields in the POM zoning district, it would need a special exception from the BCA or Ward of Zoning Appeals. The Planning Commission has already reviewed this proposed text amendment and held a public review meeting, and recommended approval for this proposal. And this will also be scheduled for a public hearing on March 25th. I'm here to answer any questions.
We'll go on this one, too.
recreational opportunities.
Yeah, the next one.
You okay if I move on to the next one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome, okay. Well, I'm here for talking about the Appalachian Regional Commission funding request for FY2026. So we try, every year, staff gets together to talk about potential grant proposal ideas to submit to ARC for grant opportunities. This year, staff came up with two, two projects. The first one is phase two of the Hager House Museum renovation, so to continue the renovation update, updating the space to create modern interpretive exhibits. Funding was granted for this, I believe, in FY24. So we would like to continue pursuing grant funding for this. The second proposal is to update the city's comprehensive plan. So state law requires the comprehensive plan to be updated every 10 years. Our current one was done in 2018, and it was done in-house, and the last consultant-assisted plan was done in 2008. Currently, the plans are too technical for us to do two in-houses, so that is strongly discouraged. So we do want to seek outside consulting help. And so the next step would to, would be to vote to authorize submission of the ARC grant request to the Washington County for them to rank all the grant proposals. And that is scheduled for March 20, the next regular session. And this also has a deadline for March 20th on Thursday, so we'll have to submit this before the vote. But as long as we all get head nods of approval, I think it should be okay.
Any questions, Joanna? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
City administrator.
Just this big weekend, St. Patrick's Day weekend, we have St. Patrick's Day run, Washington County Parks and Rec, puts on, we have City Brewery, then we have a full day of events in the downtown, so looking forward to the rain holding off and having a nice event there. That's it for me.
Councilwoman Anderson.
I just have a small, I guess I kind of need a vote. If you guys are okay with doing, like, a women's proclamation, the last, like, our last session for all the women workers, including Donna, Janet, Kathy Marr, the list goes on and on, all the women that work for the city of Hagerstown, if we could just celebrate them, the last work session, being that it's Women's Month.
Yeah.
I guess, great.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, we love you, Donna.
And Jill. Love them, too.
Councilwoman Flaherty. Councilwoman Burnett.
Oh, just one thing. I just want to give a thank you to Brittany and Leah for moving forward with the sponsorship for the Primetime Accelerate, Accelerate Action Women's Day Conference hosted by Bernard Wagner. Small sponsorship, but nonetheless, it goes towards our number five of our goals with supporting women and women businesses. So thank you for, for doing that.
Councilwoman Bell.
Nothing today.
And I have nothing myself. Any getting motion to adjourn?
Adjourned. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion about any agenda items tonight? Okay, we're adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Council Wrap. I'm Wes Decker and I'm joined this evening by Chief Paul Kiefer of the Hagerstown Police Department. Also, I've got Sergeant Ed Plummer with me and we've got the Community Liaison Coordinator in Ashley Roush. Welcome. And there was a lot of discussion during the meeting about what once was called the Anti-Camping Ordinance. First of all, that title has been changed. So I guess my first question is, what was the thinking on changing that from the Anti-Camping Ordinance to what was discussed tonight, which was the Prohibited Lodging Out of Doors Ordinance?
Well, Sergeant Plummer addressed that. So when we originally set this up, we were kind of going off of what the wording was from different areas of the country. And then when we brought it to Chief and Chief was reviewing it, he said, so camping can campaign all kinds of pictures. We don't want people to think that camping is, we're against the recreational sport of camping or the recreational hobby of camping. But the actual wording of prohibited lodging out of doors kind of explains it. It makes it more clear what we're lodging the ordinance for.
And since the last time that this had been discussed with Mayor and Council, what has happened since then? Can you kind of take me through where we've been and how we got here this evening with what was presented?
Yeah, we took that constructive conversation from the from the meeting in December. We went back and literally watched the council meeting again. So we didn't miss any of the comments or questions that each council member had and tried to look at the ordinance as we had it originally drafted to see where we might have had some shortfalls and we wanted to meet the needs that they were seeking. And with that, staff, other staff that's not here, you know, at table with us tonight, got together and really started to look at it from standpoint of let's, let's pare it down to a real basic ordinance instead of adding in all this other stuff, which makes it really confusing and can make it confusing. So staff did a great job. They found there's already an ordinance that covers property that city has on the books. We reviewed our policies to see where any of our policies would meet the needs of the council members that they had. We had all that available to us tonight. They wanted to see that and needed it. I don't think that came up tonight. But we really went back and took a real hard look at what their needs were to, to see where we wanted to do this. So we put together our heads and kind of came back with where we were today. So it was really looking at that, that give and take, trying to figure out where they want to be to see if we can get something across the finish line that meets the needs of the community and helps us do what we need to do.
Ashley, I'll get to you in just a moment. Let me get back to Sergeant Plummer just real quick, though. Sum up what the gist of this is. What is this attempting to accomplish? Because it seems like this particular topic brings a lot of emotions to the, to the fore, depending upon who it is, who's reacting to it and what they're hearing. But truly, what is this attempting to do?
Protect the public from every aspect. You know, if you, if you have people who are lodging out of doors, like I said during the meeting, they, they are in a vulnerable state. If you are asleep and not aware of where your surroundings, things can happen. There's crimes of opportunity can arise. But it also leaves the ability to preserve the areas in the city that are designed for individuals to enjoy to not be monopolized by one person. So it just, it kind of creates an overall, it's got aspects for every side to kind of just help protect everybody involved. It's the sanctity of the city. And this is just one more tool for the officers to use as they go through. I mean, it's not going to be the end all be all. It's not going to be the answer. It's not going to be the solution. But it's going to be one more tool to help us kind of move through our goal of serving the citizens. And that, that doesn't always look pretty. But the aspects you have to keep in mind are, again, you know, the different crimes. When I was in patrol, I was keeping track of some of those crimes of opportunity. I know for one, a lady who was lodging out of doors had her purse stolen. And had she been behind closed doors, if she had been someplace where her belongings were secure, she would still probably have her purse.
And the reason that HPD would like to have this, this tool in their arsenal, so to speak, is because right now there are loopholes that seemingly can be found where there's absolutely nothing that can be done, depending upon what the situation might be. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, I would absolutely, I'm sure the chief would agree. We did not, when we had a camping situation in the shadow of the police department, it's not something we want, you know, we, we wanted that to be, you know, the area needed to be available for everybody to use. And it wasn't. There's nothing we could do. And people were saying, this is happening 100 yards from your front door and there's nothing you can do? There wasn't anything we could do. They had, they had every vantage point of the law taken care of. And it was one anchor person who was there. And people were coming to hang out. People were coming there to party. People were doing, but they were abiding by the law by not, not blocking free passage. That's one law that we have in our toolbox.
So by the letter of the law?
Correct. And, and so by the letter of the law, they weren't, there was still free passage. People could get around without causing, the definition of that law is to prevent, for people to have safe passage. So if you are blocking free passage and I have to step out into the roadway to get around that, I've now put myself in danger. So both people are supposed to be able to utilize that space. In this instance, people were utilizing that space and camping, but they left a space open. So we had for, I want to say it was two, two months or, there was nothing we could do. We tried. We, we went over, we talked to them. We offered them services. We did everything we could. And I know from one of those instances, if a lady who would come there to, she was just there hanging out. She actually wasn't part of that camp. She had come by to hang out. She fell asleep and passed away right there on the sidewalk while it happened. So like, it's one more preventative measure for us to, to try to mitigate any, any issues in the city.
And in that situation, we had a young lady that her worldly possessions were in a shopping cart. And the barrier was that she couldn't go get services because she'd had to leave her shopping cart outside on the sidewalk while she go into social services or other organizations. And because of that, her stuff would be stolen. So therefore, she didn't go get services. So we worked as a, as a community of police officers to help her and get that out. We brought in the community partners and had them, that was the first time that our community partners came out of their offices and came onto the site of, and went to where this person needed the help and worked on that. So by, it took us months, but we finally got her the help she needed. And once that happened, then the problem, that problem dissipated. But then we knew that it was potential for it to happen again. So we had to look at long-term solutions. And that's where the, the artwork that went up there that we had Public Works and Engineering do, that was done so that it's a crime prevention through environmental design. And it's unfortunate, but we had to, we had to create those issues because we were taking call after call after call. And people were just dumbfounded why we couldn't do something. Why would you allow that to happen? And it wasn't a crime. It wasn't a crime.
And that's one of the things that, that, you know, all of you deal with so much within the city of Hagerstown because talked about it just about as it relates to every topic within the city, and that's the perception and misperceptions. And all of a sudden, when you have something like this, you know, Sergeant, right in the shadow of, you know, police headquarters and you can't do anything about it, how does that make the police look? I mean, you've got, you've got no ability to, to do anything about something that's right there. And obviously you see it.
And how do you think that the men and women that come to work every day feel that their community feels about them, when they know they can't do anything, but yet they get that feeling that the public doesn't think that they're doing anything? So by doing this ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, it's to reduce that frustration level. It's to give us a tool when it's necessary and, and allow us to address a situation when that necessitates when other laws or abilities aren't present.
Yes. So Ashley, how long have you been with the city now?
Altogether, roughly 10 years with a little break in between.
Okay, good, good. Because this is what I want to get to. I want to hear your perspective on this because you're out there on the streets, you're dealing with the homeless population on a regular basis. So, you know, part of the discussion during the meeting, and I think Chief in particular brought this up, is that, you know, the attitudes, so to speak, of the, the homeless population have changed. And I know it's, that's in conjunction with what's happened within the country itself in large part. But what, what have your experiences been? Like, what, what changes have you seen over the course of those 10 years?
I think the chief and I could talk about this. I mean, when I first started, I worked a lot with youth and reentry and those individuals that were getting out of prison. And it's crazy till after 10 years, we've, we've watched the folks that we were working with that were being recently released from the prison system go from, from dealers to users, some of them dying. I've watched guys that we, I worked with very early on in my career pass away from overdose who used to deal and, and also experience homelessness. So, so it's not, it affects everyone. I've, I've run the gamut. We talk about the reentry population. We talk about, you know, those dealing with substance abuse. We talk about mental health. Like, it is, it affects everyone. It really does. Like Councilwoman Burnett said, we are all just a job loss away, you know, something, you know, away from, from being homeless. And so I've seen it. I've, I've seen everything. I've seen, I've seen it. I, you know, and I think any community partner that you talk to that does this work could tell you stories too, that we've all seen it. And, and it really does affect everyone. And I do think that, you know, I think, again, Councilwoman Burnett hit it on the head. We need to do better as a, as a community, as a county, as, as, as a whole.
And how about the, the level of combativeness? Have you personally seen that rise?
Yeah. And you know, I don't, you know, I wonder combatant if has risen, you know, our political environment has changed, the society that we live in has changed. But also I just think that, you know, right, right now, and not just politically, but I just, I feel like people just lose hope. You know, you get, if you're in these situations, there's just, you know, you lose hope and you lose that ability to just have that. And, and I always said that's one thing that if you lose, it's just what, what is life without hope?
Right. And it seems as though, you know, like losing hope leads to desperation. And then people feel as though they have nothing to lose.
Yeah. And I think there are those of us that have voices and certainly people at this table and other tables that have positions that can act, can enact change that would make a difference in the lives of those that are experiencing hopelessness. And I think we have to do a better job. And as Sergeant Plummer said, you know, part of the law is protecting those vulnerable individuals. There's a lot of other barriers and things we need to do to protect vulnerable populations that quite honestly, we as a community aren't doing a very good job of. Even at the state level, I think we could be doing more. I really do. And I think that we need to be looking into those avenues as well.
But as the chief said, this ordinance would not be criminalizing homelessness. That is not the goal of the ordinance. So what does it say to you, Chief, that the homeless coalition, I'm not going to say, you know, endorse this, but is certainly okay with this approach?
Well, I think twofold. I think they, they're experiencing the same change in society as the rest of us. They, they have concerns, their staff has concerns. The antagonistic attitude of our population, when you bring that down into people with substance abuse issues or mental health issues, just balloons a lot bigger, right? And so I think that's one of the things. But I also truly, truly believe that they trust us. They trust the police department here. They, they know how we work. We've been working with them on a non-enforcement approach. We've been, we are involved way more than most police departments are in those social issues and solving problem solving. We're in meetings that has nothing to do with law enforcement, but because we touch these people, we can provide suggestions and, and ideas and then ways that we can help those agencies through resource gathering, through data, through whatever we can do, that, that, that helps that, that problem solving approach. So I think we've built a lot of, we put a lot of deposits into this community to show that we, we are not only just empathetic and sympathetic, but we also aren't empowering people to do wrong. And that's what this ordinance is there for too, is we want to help, but at the same time, hold accountable. Because I think it has to be both. And I think sometimes we, we lose that. Sometimes we, we go one way to the other. We either want to be, everyone gets locked up and that's the answer that a lot of people in our society think is the answer, which, which doesn't work. We've tried that for, since the 80s on drugs and it didn't work. And we still have drugs around here. The other side is, we shouldn't lock anybody up. And that's what we're seeing a lot from the state legislation that's come out, is that we're giving everybody an excuse not to be held accountable. And I think we, as an agency, and I'm real proud of my staff, I'm real proud of how we approach things, we try to find that middle ground. We want to help you, but we also want to hold you accountable. And I think that's what this ordinance really is about doing, is giving you, the person I come across, the ability to voluntarily comply. You trying to throw that in my face saying that I'm not going to, I don't have to listen to the rules. I don't, those rules don't apply to me. I'm going to do what I want to do. And you can't do anything about it. Now this ordinance will give us the ability to say, I think you're wrong, sir. Here's what we're going to do. And then you have to go see a judge. And hopefully that judge is going to then impose things that we try to get you the help on, which then hopefully rings a bell with you that maybe starts you down the path of getting you back into a more stable lifestyle that doesn't have you on the street, doesn't put you in harm's way, living on the street where bad things can happen to you, you know, because you're, you're sleeping. So I think that's where we are with this.
And I want to make it very clear, if we are, and again, not even just with the homelessness, but if we're on the street with someone experiencing any kind of difficulty, especially in that social service realm, and they want assistance, we don't leave them. We make sure, and that is where our community partners are wonderful at stepping in and helping. There has never been a situation where someone is out with one of our officers and says, hey, I need to go to treatment today. I need this today. And we turn them away. The guys are dealing with it themselves. They're calling me. We're, we're essentially like case managing people calling those organizations. And we're making sure they get the help that they need when they're ready.
Right. So Wes, we are essentially law enforcement, at least here, I'm going to speak just about our police department. We are, we're a social service agency. That's what we are. Majority of what we deal with is social service issues, not criminal issues, not in a true sense.
And you are the ones who are first to that scene?
And we are always on the scene. But here's the difference between us being a social service agency and others. We never close. And we can never tell you, and we can never tell you we can't help you. Because we have to solve a problem right then and there. What is that solution we got to come up with? Other agencies, nothing, no dig, but they work nine to five, eight to four, whatever that is. And they're off on the weekends, 24/7. We are a social service agency. Ashley's coming in on her time off.
And you go to them. And that's the other thing.
And we go to them.
You go to them. It's not.
They're not coming to our building. They're not coming to us. We are meeting them where they are in their, in their moment. And that's what law enforcement really has turned into be in a large part. So we have to find solutions that are not arrestable solutions. But we still need, in these circumstances, under like this ordinance, those opportunities where we have those situations where that frustration level is there, where we're getting those calls and there's nothing we can do under the current ordinances and laws that we have to solve that problem. And to at least immediately solve that problem and then hopefully work on those solutions. Even if we arrest someone under this ordinance, they are still going to be offered assistance because that arrest is going to be through a citation. Typically, you're going to get a ticket right on the spot. And then we're still going to say, now, you got the ticket, let's help you. Let's get you where you're going to go. Let's do, work on this now so that when you go to court, you can say, I've already started working on my solution, which is only going to be beneficial for you in front of a judge anyway. So those things happen anyway. And that's what we're going to continue to do. I brought up Officer Ortiz earlier, that Sergeant Plummer brought up, the comment that we got from the gentleman. He's a prime example of what the men and women here at the police department do. This is, this is the compassion and empathy that they, they put out to these, to these individuals that we come across, no matter what their circumstances are. And that happens more often than not. So this isn't going to change that.
Right. And, and there seemed to be, Sergeant, there seemed to be some uneasiness and perhaps even some pushback from members of council, but in the end, came to what you might call a bit of a compromise with, you know, obviously you had at least one council member who was certainly in favor of this, without a doubt. You had some others with some reservations and some questions. And so we, we're going to get to a period where it's going to be like a test period, I guess, with this sun setting of the, of the ordinance. So what was your overall takeaway from what was decided by council here this afternoon?
I mean, life is all about compromises. So the fact that they, as Chief said, the fact that they trust us enough to try it, especially when, you know, it originally seemed like a majority may have been opposed to it. We came back tonight, we talked through it, we, we made, we addressed their concerns. Just like Chief said, we went back and we watched the game tape. So we, we adjusted and we came back and we presented addressing, because every single one of those concerns were valid and they, they made points. And we wanted to make sure that, that we understood all their points. So we went back and we addressed it. And I believe that the compromise is a fair one. And I think it does give our officers a chance to show that this will be a tool that could be beneficial to the city. I do, I, you know, nowhere in that ordinance is, is the word homeless ever mentioned. There are multiple, there's a spectrum of reasons why you may be lodging outdoors.
Sure.
You may not be. Like, so that.
That's a good point.
Everybody keeps bringing up homeless. Nowhere in there is the word homeless. There, there, there's a whole spectrum of reasons, Ashley, that people would be lodging outdoors, correct? You encounter it every day, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, that, that, putting that tag on it isn't fair to the tool that we're trying to use either.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's narrowing the scope way too much in terms of those who might be the offenders, so to speak. So what are some of the other reasons that people might be lodging outdoors? I mean, what have you experienced?
You know, it's, you run the gamut. We have folks that, you know, maybe they just had too much fun at Meredith's Park and, you know, on their, on their way home.
So something very temperate.
Yes. And it could happen, you know, honestly, to anyone. But, and again, an officer is going to go to that person and they're going to, to wake them up and, you know, tell them to move along. And it's a very rare instance where this ordinance would even go into effect, things like that. But we do, we do come across, you know, instances like that. But we have a lot of folks that stay with friends and they get kicked out in the middle of the night and they have nowhere to go. You know, our cold weather shelter is closing here in April. So that, that will have another gamut of issues. But a lot of times when we're dealing with people in the middle of the night and, and early in the morning, we're coming across folks that maybe weren't homeless. It's a lot of times that they get kicked out in the middle of the night. Unfortunately, we have some like young adults, that 18 to 24 year olds, that that happens to them a lot too. Unfortunately, we have some like young adults, that eighteen to twenty-four year olds, that that happens to them a lot too. Especially when they're sleeping in their cars, things like that. And usually that's a very temporary, figure it out the next day with mom kind of thing.
Yeah.
And that, that doesn't usually turn into anything.
So I'm going to take advantage of the opportunity to bring this up. We also have some facilities that are here in the city that their business model causes issues here. There are people that come here from other jurisdictions for treatment, assistance. And those business models of those few agencies that we could identify, and I'm not going to do it here. But those, those agencies will throw people out on the street for a variety of different reasons from that treatment facility with no home plan, no, no issue. And they're, they're left to their own devices. And it may be temporary. It may be they're only out on the street for a day or two here because they're trying to get their way back home.
But they're still there and someone sees.
Technically, are they homeless? Technically, yes. But, but they're here for another reason. And we've got some of those issues that are going, we're also working to try to address and see if we can resolve that are a completely different model from the homelessness, that what people envision of homelessness. But those are, those are issues that are happening here too. And, and so we're, we're in the gamut of trying to come up with ideas and solutions on a lot of this. And some, some things we can do as a government, some things we can't.
That's why I encourage, you know, Mayor and Council and everyone to get involved. You know, we, we proposed this ordinance, you know, a couple of months ago. And that's ample time for folks to come in during citizen comment and let us know their feedback. You know, this is a city ordinance that affects all of us. So I, you know, we have Neighborhoods First meetings. I tell everyone, if you are, watch council meetings. They're streamed for a reason. Give feedback. If you can't come in and give citizen comment, you can email Donna, let her know and she will make sure your comments get heard. We want everyone to have a voice and to be a part of this, especially when we're going through a process like this.
And one of the things that I heard from the council members was, and I think that's why, it's part of the reason that this is so difficult, is because they kept mentioning data, data, data. But can you truly quantify this? I mean, I, I think, I think that's, that's, that's very difficult to do because you've already determined that this would be a helpful tool in your tool belt. So I, I mean, I feel like that is, you know, to present something that is tangible and concrete isn't, isn't really that easy.
It's not. Because we can capture certain type of data because we have contacts. That data we can, we can capture and we can ask those questions and we can, we can, we can get that. But as we talked about after we went out into the other room, we enact this ordinance and we got six months to see how it's going to impact. We could make an arrest on Wes Decker, you know, two months into it.
Well, let's hope.
And, and that charge could be put in place. By the time we come back in six months, you may not have even gone to court yet. So we may not have answers for some of those to how it's going to impact them from a court standpoint. However, we can track how many contacts we're having. We can set up the ability to do that. We can see what the voluntary compliance is. I know they're looking at ages and, you know, gender and things like that. We can capture all that data, you know, from our standpoint. But again, not everybody we're going to be bringing in here with the data is going to be homeless. Not everybody's going, it's going to be the contacts that address the behavior we're talking about. So that number is going to be the behavior that we see, not the fact that everyone's just homeless.
Right.
And so not everybody's going to give us a direct answer if they're homeless or not. So we have to, we have to, we have to take their word for it.
Yeah. It's also super difficult because it's not always a crime. So a great example, I had a call from an officer one evening who asked me, because we do a homeward bound program. So if folks are here, they're displaced for whatever reason and they have found themselves homeless or unhoused, we can try to work with them on getting them home, especially in instances that the chief mentioned where maybe they're here for treatment, but they want to go back. I had an officer call me one night because someone came here for like a date. Like they met someone online, they decided to take the plunge and come to Hagerstown and then they ended up having no money and no date. And then they were just stuck here. And of course, that person had a home. We've had, you know, people bike. I've had a gentleman come to me and he biked from New York to Hagerstown. And then I think his bike got, I mean, just the things that you hear and the way people get displaced. And again, we've all been through hard times and we try to help the best that we can. But there are more than just what I think people think are traditional homeless. Like circumstances happen, things happen to people. We try our very best to assist when we can, but.
And what I think people in the community watching tonight or thinking this is addressing is what they truly see as a homeless situation. Someone sleeping under an overpass with blankets all over them. You know, the image that you see on TV that, you know, there's, there's a tent and there's people sitting around a little camp, you know, along the side of the road. That we don't get much. We don't get that much here, not, you know, in public places.
Yeah.
And, and we've been pretty good at addressing that, even before the Supreme Court changed that. We were able to address a lot of that. But the population of what people see now as homeless, as I said earlier, a lot of them are not homeless. They're just not homeless. They live on the street without sleeping on the street. So, but then they appear to be homeless because they, they have that appearance to them that everyone generalizes. And I get it. I mean, I understand. You, you look at that and it's, it's the implicit bias that people apply to other individuals that we all have. And that's where I think that's at, but that frustration level of our communities has come out. But we have legitimate issues of downtown business owners and other businesses outside of just downtown.
Right.
That when they come to work, there's people sleeping, urinating, defecating along their properties that they have to deal with. And that is not fair to them. Especially if it's on public property that they're doing this and we don't have a recourse for it.
Right.
You know, if it's on their personal property and it's happening, then they have the trespassing issues that they can deal with. And we can, we can still deal with that from a legal standpoint. But once they're on the public property and doing that, then, you know, those sometimes are just those cracks we're talking about. And if we can't say, you know, Wes, you were here this morning and I told you to leave and you keep coming back every morning, then this ordinance can be that step to say, okay, you're just not getting this. So we're going to charge you with.
And so when we talk about data, those instances where an officer might say to move along or those instances where I'm getting called about the gentleman whose bike was stolen or the one that lost his, you know, catfish love, those kinds of things, we don't, there's no crime attached to them. So there's no report generated. It's not tracked. It's not easily tracked. So it is going to be a learning curve, I think, to track. And then we'll have to hash that out with Mayor and Council about really what they want and maybe get a new records management.
We'll have to change how we're doing things with the guys to see what we can track the data.
And that goes back to what Sergeant Plummer said during the meeting. And certainly you echoed that, the amount of time that's spent on these calls that just adds up when you get them again and again and again. No matter how much time it takes to attempt resolve, the fact is, you're going out to answer these each and every time.
And as I said, being a social service agency, and I declare that because the study, the rudimentary study we did, and I want to make that very clear, it wasn't a complete in-depth study. Was to take six months worth of data and attach the man hours that it took to address those issues for six months. And in six months, we spent eight years of man hours to address six months worth of social service, social issues.
That's a staggering figure.
Social issues that we were able to track based on the data that we had, that doesn't include the stuff that we kind of just.
That's just the calls of service we're talking about. The typical, we identified certain types of calls of service that we associate to social issues. Not all those would be, but we lumped that in. That's why I say it was not in-depth. But with that, we're, we're close. So eight years worth of man hours to address six months worth of types of calls, that tells you what we do and how we're trying to do things. This is a really super small portion of this for just those ones that kind of fall into the cracks of the ability for us to deal with them from a legal standpoint without standing there going, wow, nothing I can do.
Yeah. Yeah. But when you mention something like eight years of man hours for six months of real time, I mean, that gives you an indication of how important something like this could potentially be as that tool in the tool belt that you don't have now. So I think that really puts it into perspective.
It takes a lot of tools to build a house. We can't, we can't build this house without having a lot of tools. If we didn't, the house wouldn't be sound. It wouldn't be a structure that everybody would be proud of. So, I mean, with, with all these tools, we can, we can build a better society.
Yeah.
I'm going to use an analogy that he brought up in the other room and I'm going to bring it up because I think it's appropriate now. You know, when you talk about tools, we carry a lot of tools in our tool belt. We carry pepper spray and tasers and a gun and those other things. And we rarely use any of them. And the reason why it's there is when you need to use it.
Yes.
And this ordinance is the same thing. When you need to use it.
It's that last resort.
It's available to use when you need to use it. So that's, that's somewhat of an analogy which he brought up in there, which I thought was, was appropriate. It's a tough thing. And I, I don't have, I have a lot of respect for them to have to make that decision up here because they're the ones going to get the emails and the phone calls and all the stuff that comes into them. I get that. Trust me, I get that. But that's why I think this was a great compromise tonight that Councilwoman Anderson come up with because I think it gives the ability to show that this isn't the big scary monster that everybody thinks that it is. Just like our crime-free housing program that we tried, that we put in place back in two thousand and eleven-ish. The big concern was this was going to be, while we're just going to be charging property owners and gathering all these fees and doing all, and it was the farthest thing from the truth. It did exactly what we wanted to do. It got everyone to be compliant. It got everyone to try to, to be better ambassadors of the properties that they owned. And it made our community better. Because there was, there was that, that holding of this over their head kind of thing.
A little bit of accountability that made everyone feel safer.
Yeah. And that became a non-issue. And I honestly believe this is going to be a non-issue as well.
Right. And I think oftentimes there's, there's so much discussion ahead of time because there, there is a little bit of fear because something like this hasn't been done before, here at least. And it's like, well, because it worked there, we're not the same here. And we say that all the time and that's true. So the only way to figure it out is to implement it. And as you said, probably a pretty good compromise made by the body here.
I thought it was brilliant.
Over the next six months. So hopefully it's, you know, good for everyone. And at the end of six months, have some, you know, good information to report. And this, you know, potentially becomes something that would be, would be permanent. And as you said, Sergeant, that, that tool in the tool belt that right now is missing. So I thank all of you for your time here this evening. Talked about this so much. Again, time for implementation to take place, which will be happening over the next six months or so. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you to all of you for watching and for being interested. And look forward to seeing you next time. For now, that's a wrap.